Do your civic duty, be unbiased, but if you really want to get out of here, there's always a way to get out of it. You just have to show up biased. The stand-up, I'll tell you what the parties are, which means whether it's criminal or some case. But if you really wanted to get out of it, which I don't think you should. Okay, let me tell you how they, this is what most people do not understand. You're gonna have like thirty or forty jurors in prison. Numbers one through, depending on what kind of case it is, let's say it's a capital, a twelve-person jury. Numbers one through twelve, it's already the jury as is. So if your number is forty, there's probably no way you're gonna get out of the jury anyway. So it doesn't matter. So what they do is they're gonna go through and just have a question before you ask them. And last year, I had a question.
Oh, so you're gonna help us with this, right?
Watch so that we can know whether you're conservative or more of the rules. Or whatever, that's why your family, where you work. I mean, they could ask you, maybe it has something to do with city issues. Do you have a reason to be unbiased? And if you're unbiased, then the way it works is so, then we can strike anybody for a word of a cause. So somebody who is considered biased, they can say, they're wrong because they've caused it to be wrong. And after that, each attorney gets a three or four strikes. Where we wanna kick off, or no, just to know. So if I kick off the number six and you're number thirteen, that'd be different from three. So what I'm always trying to decide, if I'm like, okay, I don't look six, but do I like thirty? Yeah, I like one. No, you guys are opposite, and we're sitting in front of you. Me and my client are literally like scissor turning it. It's the worst thing ever, 'cause I'm like, how is this person gonna decide this case? I would only make this person feel like two seconds, and I know what news she watches. I mean, what are, how many kids she has and where she lives for a living. It's like black magic. So they'll ask for, just know that if your like number is like five, you're like number four. Do you do these fun things? I mean, do you do this? Just gotta be, just gotta be unbiased. And you got a little bit of facts in the lock, all the information. The most fair system that you can be. Oh, bring something, because I said they're going to come. And then the other thing is, is it could settle right before. You could get their eight o'clock, and you could, they could call you in, and settle the case. Or they could, they still give you a number to call in the night before. Because you could call in on Monday night, and they could settle it. It's amazing how many times we settle right when the other side knows that we're serious about it.
Oh, do you wanna know, Peter's gonna do the pledge, and Dylan's gonna do the remarks. Sixteen.
Please, it's hard, but it's a very funny position.
What if, what if he elects him to?
What if he gets elected chair? Then you're gonna second yourself?
Yes.
You're showing your shoes every day?
Yeah, I totally watch it.
I used to get a vest to change, and my issue was that. I used to, if you had my issue, they're coming, I never used to.
Okay, we're gonna, let's see, no, we're not. Check my volume, there we go. We're going to call to order the December tenth, two thousand fifteen Pleasant Grove City Planning Commission. Present are Peter Steele, Lisa Coombs, Amy Cardon, Drew Armstrong, Scott Richards, Dallin Nelson, Jennifer Baptista, Matt Neidiger, and Levi Adams. I'm gonna start with a pledge allegiance from Peter Steele and opening remarks from Dallin Nelson.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our dear Father in heaven, we are thankful to be gathered this evening as a community. At Pleasant Grove, we're thankful for the freedoms that we enjoy that enable us to meet together under favorable circumstances. We pray for our blessings on this meeting, that we can be able to identify the needs and how we can meet them in a peaceful manner. And love be Father, and we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ.
The first order is, we have an agenda approval, which do have one change. As far as that goes, if somebody would like to make the motion.
Chair, I'll make the motion.
Okay.
I make the motion that we accept the agenda, except that we change number twelve to number one.
Okay, number twelve to number one. All in favor?
Aye.
That passes. What about staff reports?
Sure, I'm willing to approve the staff report.
My second.
A motion to approve staff reports from Commissioner Nelson, and a second from Commissioner Coombs. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Passes. Declaration of conflicts, of conflicts and abstention from commission members. I am going to declare abstention from the public caring site plan forty-five South Main Street. And I've asked Commissioner Richards to fill in for me for that item, and I'll step aside. And does anybody else have any abstentions or declarations of conflict? Nope. So we'll move forward with, what we're going to do now, it's not, I mean, it is on there as item number twelve, is every year we, at the last Planning Commission meeting of the year, we have to do our elections for the chair and vice chair for next year. So that's what we're gonna do over there. And we do that by nominating, if anybody wants to run. Can you nominate yourself?
I don't think you, there's any rule against it.
Okay, well, let's go ahead and.
The only provision would be that the current chair can become the next chair.
Okay, so I have a nomination. I'd like to nominate Commissioner Adams for chair.
My second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any other nominations for chair?
I'd like to nominate Scott Richards.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Do we have a vote? Maybe we nominate him.
No, I think you have to second him.
Just have to second.
Yeah, you have to second him.
Okay, so we'll just go with that. And we've got, so we've got a couple. Do we have anybody else who would like to nominate somebody?
I'd like Amy Cardon for assistant, or what do you call that person?
Vice chair.
I'll second that.
Um, no, sorry. Amy and Dallin's terms will be in January.
I have, I'm, this is my third year, I have two years left. Or one year, four years, okay, I have a year left.
She's actually Scott senior to her.
We may have something wrong in our records then.
Okay.
Amy, as I think back now, I think that's correct, but I know our records say something else.
I wonder if she, did you bump up in the place somebody maybe?
Maybe it was like Commissioner Richards, where she sat as an alternate player here?
We'll check on it, sorry, Amy.
Don't mean to.
Yeah, we're good. We're good.
I'm not leaving.
Look at Ryan, Ryan. Someone called police, Ryan. We have to do one thing at a time, though, right?
Yes.
Okay, let's go ahead. Should we close the nominations? Is there anybody else that would like to nominate somebody for chair position? Oh, okay, then we.
I'll nominate Lisa Coombs also for vice chair.
We're not doing vice chair.
We're not doing that yet. Just gonna close the nominations for.
We should probably do one position at a time.
We're gonna close the nominations for chair, and then I've got the ballots right here. And so I'll pass these. Well, I think, I think what it concerns is that there's, I would wish to accept it. Because what it is, don't make it, to, I mean, if you've got two people, maybe the person who chooses wants to be.
Don't forget to list yourselves.
All right, so we have three votes for Scott Richards and six votes for Levi Adams.
Thank you, thanks for your support. I'm sorry, I have to leave.
We'll do the vice chair. Do we have a nomination, let's open the nominations for vice chair.
I wouldn't like to say, at least I have Amy.
So we've got a nomination for Lisa and a nomination for Amy, and we're vice chair. Do we have anybody else? Any other nominations?
I will nominate Scott Richards.
Scott Richards. Okay, I'll second that. Anybody else? Any other nominations? Okay, let's close the nominations for vice chair, and let's vote.
We're not gonna use sticky notes.
Hey, we have four votes for Lisa Coombs, three for Scott Richards, and two for Amy Cardon. So Lisa Coombs. Thank you, and congratulations. And let's move forward with item number one, which is.
Just excuse me, apologize.
Now, we are going to excuse our.
If we don't excuse, we can't.
That's true.
If we don't excuse, we can't.
Let's move forward with item number one, which is a preliminary hearing for a preliminary subdivision approval at seven seventy-five South Nathaniel Drive in the Scratch gravel neighborhood. This is a public hearing, it's a consider request by Land Rock Development LC for a three-lot private subdivision called East Grove Pod. It consists of approximately point nine acres on a property located in approximately seven seventy-five South Nathaniel Drive in the R one-nine single-family residential zone.
Okay, so this is southeastern Pleasant Grove. The lot lines here were originally drawn differently than they are now. The property owner, who has applied for the subdivision, bought the owner of these two properties here, has applied to basically fix a slot line and create a buildable lot. So you can kind of see the property lines overlapping there, it's a little clearer in the zoning. The original property lines being these that are quite particular, and new property lines being these ones that are shown here. So while they were recorded with the county, they weren't recognized by the city. So what has been proposed is that we create these three lots. Again, we've got two existing homes, and then Lot One to create a new buildable lot. So even though Lot One may look kind of small, it's the nine thousand one square feet is required by the zone. I've done the measuring on it to make sure that setbacks allow for buildable area. It's got approximately three thousand square foot between twenty-five hundred and three thousand square foot buildable area there, which is more than sufficient for what our code requires. So anyway, I feel like this is a good thing. It's gonna clean up some lot lines and also create a buildable lot where there wasn't one before. It does meet all the requirements for the R one-nine zone, and it's intended to be general plan. So are there any questions on this subdivision?
Commissioners, do you have any questions? Joyce? Thank you, Joyce. So now what we do is, is the applicant present? Do you have the applicant?
Yes.
Would you like to go ahead and step up to the podium and give us your name and your current address for the record?
My name is William Harris, I go by Bill. And the original survey on those three lots is ridiculous. Lot number one, that survey, went behind my house. I own the center lot. And the lot on the far side, it had no property in front for a double driveway. So the owner and I got together, and he traded me property that was, was his behind my house, and I traded him frontage. So that's square away that lot. The other had originally went behind my house also. So through survey, we squared away those, and it allowed me to have this non-conforming lot. But I think it meets all the requirements that you require.
Looks like it.
I'm hoping it does.
Okay. Do, Commissioners, do you have any questions for acting?
Sorry, I'm just trying to see if this building right there. This is the building that's right in the center there, is that something that's going away then?
I'm sorry, I'm not hearing.
It's on both lots.
Yeah, that's to be removed on the plan.
There is a shed there.
Okay, and it'll be gone.
Pardon?
It's gonna be removed?
It is.
Okay.
Okay, anything else? Well, thank you. If we have any other questions after we have public comment, we might call back up.
Okay.
And so we'll close.
My dismissed, then.
Yes, you are. No, I wouldn't leave quite yet, but like, now let's open this up for public comments. Is there anyone here to speak to this item? Okay, we'll close that one back down. Bring it up here. Commissioners, do you have anything?
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to approve, I'm with the Planning Commission, approve the request of Land Rock Development LC for, I assume it's an LLC, is that correct?
Oh, Nelson.
LLC, okay, for a three-lot preliminary subdivision plot called East Grove Pod B on property approximately seven seventy-five South Nathaniel Drive, in the R one-nine single residential zone, and it has its conditions and finances to have a tour.
Second.
So we've got a motion from Commissioner Richards, and a second from Commissioner Nelson. All in favor?
Aye.
That passes. We'll move on to the next item, and I'm gonna accuse myself, so I'll step down. You manage it, you're good.
Okay, so, the budget for forty-five South Main, located at the same address in the downtown village zone. So we're actually just right, well, almost across the street from here. So this is the property. For those that are familiar, the old city hall is here, and there is a petition shop or salon there. City hall being over here. So what has been proposed is a mixed-use development, which means the intent of the, the intent of the zone here. So this is the downtown village zone, commercial sales sub-district with an overlay, which is the stripes there on the zoning. That's the downtown mixed-use overlay. So, let's see, so here's the site plan. So the building, the proposed building here, running on the main street, will be lined up pretty well with the, the existing salon there. Parking to the rear, and then access coming through this driveway that leads into the parking lot for the library up here and the city hall over here. So the applicant has worked out an agreement with the city to where they can get access here, but also joint parking. Should the parking become a pull here, the parking spaces will be available in the city parking lot for this development. There'll also be walking access between the rear of the building and the front here, this plaza on the side. So these are just storm drainage things. But there'll be accesses in the front here, and then also one access in the rear. So, let's see, here's a landscape plan. There's not a lot of landscaping with this, because it's a lot of dirt space. But we have some landscaping here in the back that will be taken care of by the applicant. There are some trees out there that will be removed, and then other landscaping included here in the plaza area. So here's a picture of what the sod will look like. So there's gonna be two commercial units on the bottom with accesses into those, and then two residential units and two more, so for a total of four residential apartments on top. So as you can see, this is mostly brick and glass and stucco. The design overall leads the intent of the ordinance for this area, which is more of a turn of twentieth century look. So we're looking for a lot of brick, again, glass, and these parapets. The molding here also lends itself to that style. So the applicant's indicated that he's worked on designing this building after a building that actually used to be on this site. So apparently it's burned down at some point. So apparently this looks like the building that was there. I'm not sure whether it does myself or not, but I haven't ever seen it. But this is from the rear. So we've got stucco and brick, with some accesses on the rear there. Some balconies here for the residential units, and then these will be just rear accesses for the, for the commercial. So color-wise, it'll be red, bricks, and a mix of red colors. And then some lighter colors up here. colors up here, tans, and then, of course, I guess mangoes are clear, whatever color that is. So as you can see down here, these are kind of the aesthetics that the applicant is going for in terms of the design. So again, meeting the requirements for the zone, and then also feel like matching the historic buildings in the area fairly well, really well, actually. So floor plan wise, this is the main floor, so you have an open space here for the commercial with the front entrances here, and then bathroom storage areas back here with accesses to the rear. And then this rear access provides stairs that go up to residential space. The top two stories will feature a couple of different units. So you have one here with enclosed room in the back and an open area, and then, of course, kitchens, bathrooms, as required by code for dwelling. So, let's see, oh, back up a little bit. So overall, the design of the building was recommended for approval by the Downtown Advisory Board, and that was on Monday night. So based on their recommendation and also based on staff review, this does meet the intent of the code, also meets the letter of the code, and I feel like kind of goes to what we'd like to see in downtown area as it runs up to Main Street, it's gonna provide some nice kind of human-scale development down there, which we feel like is beneficial. Provided this goes well, the applicant is looking at potentially expanding the building, so we feel like this is a good opportunity for the city to potentially get some good redevelopment down in the downtown area. So are there any questions on this item?
I have one question. Sorry. So is this, are these parking spots right here, here?
Yes.
And will they be used for that building?
They will, yeah.
My concern is we've got four residential that are already gonna need parking spots. Are they, I mean, we're not gonna let them park here overnight then, right?
Yeah, there will be four primary parking spaces in the rear here. And as we said, there will be parking that will be available to the residents in the back on the city property, provided that, you know, if there's employees parking back here.
I have parking questions too, so she answered some, maybe you already answered some of them. So when you said the primary parking, how are they gonna be?
My understanding is they'll be marked. I guess the applicant can speak more specifically how that would work, but they'll be marked, you know, this is for...
But most of the parking for that business is gonna be promoted to go to the back?
Well, business parking, I mean, just like any other business, I mean, we're not gonna say...
It doesn't have that many, it only has possibly two parkings in front, is that right?
Right.
Well, I think they could park...
I mean, they could perfectly anywhere.
Or right there, two, walk over.
I know, but it's kind of unique to the other businesses that have parking strips and stuff like that.
Yeah, so I mean, there is different, like, these two parking spots available, and this is, but parking meets the requirement, so...
That's my point of interpretation.
That's a good question. I mean, the downtown stuff is always tricky with parking because there isn't a whole lot of room for large parking areas, but I mean, the success of the businesses that have one down there, we haven't seen parking...
Can you say that these would be already earmarked for the residential parking then, for the owners of the residence there?
Yeah, four of them, to my understanding, and the rest would be flex parking. Excuse me.
Actually, there's two parking stalls per residential unit, so there's actually eight stalls there. You've got four against the building and four more to the east there. But with the joint parking agreement, there was additional parking made available in the city's parking lot for any overflow, which could be either residential or commercial.
So the residents won't have an automatic space in this?
Yes, I believe they will be designated as, as they are required to have two per unit.
Okay. So that's what my concern is.
So there's no business parking in that area then?
It probably will not be designated business parking in that area, but the overflow could be in the city's parking lot.
I just want to make sure that the residents have some parking.
Right. Yeah, I mean, it's gonna be really an enforcement thing, you know, make sure that we don't have people that aren't supposed to be parking there, but be able to make sure there are business parking spots. Any other questions?
Any other questions for Royce?
Just as summation, right, so what you're saying is parking sufficient, we're discussing up here just where is that in our package, I missed the question Lisa asked initially, so I apologize, but what you're saying then is we're good as far as parking goes.
Yes, yeah, and it's because of the parking agreement with the city. So they're not just limited to this space and the two spaces out in front, they have all of that, plus they have simple parking, parking those one.
That's a good idea, and that's good, thank you.
Any other questions for Royce?
Okay. Is the applicant Eric, Eric, is it Eric or Eric?
It's Eric, yeah.
You'll state your name and address for this.
Absolutely. Eric Jensen, seventy North Main Street, Bountiful, Utah. Mr. Vice Chairman, thank you, and members of the commission for having us tonight, it's great to be here. I don't know, I can't remember if I've come before you or not, but just so you know who I am, I'm the past president of the Utah chapter of American Planning Association, and I was the community planning and redevelopment director for Bountiful City for ten years. And the project that we're bringing to you tonight is very similar to one that we've already done before in Bountiful's historic downtown area. It's been up and operational now for about five years, and it's doing extremely well. And so we brought that same model here to your main street at the request of your planning commission chairman, Mr. Drew Armstrong, and that's why he's accusing himself tonight is because he came and heard us speak at a planning conference and thought that what we were doing would fit well in your community, and so that's why we're here tonight. So if this turns out well, you know who to thank, and if it turns out poorly, you know who to drum out of town. But we're very, very excited to be here. My family has a historic presence here in Pleasant Grove, or a history. My grandfather was a construction contractor, a very large contractor in the state, built many large buildings, universities, and around the addition of the Salt Lake Temple in the sixties, the Capitol Building remodel in the sixties, and his bank was here in Pleasant Grove. This was the bank that treated him the best and provided him the service he wanted. So even though he was based out of Capitol Hill area of Salt Lake, he had his bank, did all this banking here in Pleasant Grove. So I am very happy and pleased to be back here in your community. All I can say is we're excited to be here, we think it's a great project, we think your main street's wonderful, and so we thank you for letting us develop in your community.
Do you have any questions, anybody have any questions for Mr. Jensen? Okay, thank you, Mr. Jensen.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, we'd like to open this up to the public session. If anybody wants to comment on this particular agenda item, please take the podium and state your name and address for the record. We'll open it at, we'll open this up at this time. Anybody? Okay, we'll close it. So any further comment up here?
Mr. Chair, I move the planning commission approve the request of Eric Jensen for a mixed-use building called forty-five South Main in the downtown village zone, commercial sub-district, downtown mixed-use overlay, and adopting the exhibits, conditions, and findings of the staff report.
Okay, so we got a motion by Commissioner Coombs.
I'll second.
Seconded by Commissioner Baptista. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, well, like, Chairman Armstrong, back up here for doing his duties.
Okay, we'll move on to item number three, which is a public hearing for a city code text amendment citywide. Public hearing is a considered request by Ryan Warner for a proposed text amendment modifying section eight, ten dash eighteen dash two, parking and design standards to remove the requirement to provide paved access to non-primary garages in Pleasant Grove city code.
So what is currently required by the code is that it doesn't matter what kind of a garage it is, you have to provide paved access from the garage to the street. So whether that's an attached garage, a carport, even in an unconstructed parking area, or an accessory garage of any size. So what we propose is that if the garage is required for the parking for the primary dwelling, and it's meeting a minimum parking requirement, that yes, there should be paved access because we anticipate that would be used on a daily basis or a regular basis. So the idea behind providing paved access is so that we don't have, you know, ruts and stuff going across people's lawns, or, you know, whatever may happen in terms of using a garage consistently without... So if we have garages that, whether they be attached, a carport, a parking area, whatever, if we have it that's not used for the primary parking, let's say it's like an accessory building, as the applicant's requested, you have an accessory building that you're not using for primary parking, or you're, say, storing old cars out there, or your ATVs or whatever, that even though it may be a garage, you don't have to have parking to it, or have a paved access to it. So that would be, that's what's been proposed. This is kind of how things have been enforced to an extent. We've been enforcing it more harshly now, recently, just saying, you know, it does say paved, so you need to provide paved access. Basically, it's created a hardship for a lot of people because, let's say that you have an accessory garage that you build, and then you have to now build maybe a forty-five foot long paved access to it. In some cases, that may double the cost of the project and make it prohibited. So we don't want to overburden people for something that they're not going to be accessing very often. So in an attempt to do that, and allow people to still be able to build accessory buildings or even attached garages that they don't necessarily want to pave to, if it's not being used for the primary parking, I feel like there should be, it should be optional. So are there any questions about this amendment?
Questions? So I assume one of the reasons for the requirement to have a paved driveway is to keep preventing gravel or mud cracked into the street, is there any concern about that with removing a requirement, which sounds...
Yeah, I mean, there's always a concern with that. I mean, any, I guess, if you think about different types of vehicles, there's gonna be different impacts. So if somebody has a tractor, they're much more likely to bring mud and dirt into the street than if they're just driving a little machine or something, so, which isn't necessarily inherently tied to having pavement or not having pavement. So I mean, that's something that we thought about, and again, if it's not being used for primary parking, we don't anticipate heavy use. So if there becomes heavy use and you get a complaint and there's now dirt in the street and stuff, then that's when we would go and say, okay, well, you know, it's like you're doing some pavement, though there wouldn't be a requirement for that in the code, it would be a suggestion for the city at that point.
Could we add in here that there is a requirement of gravel or something to keep it from turning into a big money mess?
Yeah, maybe we can afford to do that. I would recommend that we put some sort of parameter on there, basically saying that it should be a certain type of gravel, or it can install a certain bit or something to that extent because, you know...
Gravel or pavers or concrete strips or something.
So, and I guess that again, kind of still brings up the issue that, you know, if somebody has a garage, well, let's say they use it for like an art studio, they do a whole new thing in there, everything's a rock, you know, then we would require this gravel back there. So I would recommend there'd be some sort of qualification if the garage is used for parking, that we do it like used space rather than building-based, if that makes sense?
It seems like if you've got a big roll-up door, that probably would be the qualifier, otherwise it's an accessory building or accessory garage, or you'd be...
Yeah, but I'm just saying, not every roll-up door accessory building or garage is used for parking. Any other questions for Royce?
Yeah, I don't know, I feel like there should be some other, I mean, I get it, like, they don't all need to have a big concrete driveway.
Okay, well, if we don't, I mean, you...
How do you, one of the terms, say if it were to switch ownership, and the person that built it, say, used it, as you're stating, and the next person that comes in and says, hey, great, another parking space, how do you see that going in the future?
Yeah, that's right.
How does that become, at what point do you step in and say, it needs to be paved or something has to happen?
Yeah, because at that point, it seems like it would become a complaint-based issue, you know, if the neighbors aren't having an issue with it, and it's not causing a problem for the street, we may never hear about it, but if it becomes a problem for somebody, that's when it becomes our attention.
Yep, but if it comes to your attention, then what does the city do?
Right, that's what, I guess, going back to what Peter was saying, is that, you know, if we have some part of the code that basically says, you know, here's what has to happen if there's an issue, that could definitely work, some sort of failsafe in there. Like I said, as it's proposed right now, if that did happen, we could suggest that there was something, but we don't have any teeth or we're making anything happen.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, you know, I don't know if it's a, I guess it depends on the situation, whether it be an issue or not. I can speak for myself, I have a property that's four hundred and thirty-five feet deep and a hundred and fifty wide, and I have an open hayloft in probably about halfway back to my property, a couple of quarter feet back, and I do have a two-car garage, you know, it's attached to the house. My wife parks it, we get, they both have cars in the garage. So I'm frequently parked in the back in the hayloft, and I have a mixture of dirt and gravel, you know, along that road that takes me back there. And I've never seen a problem with mud or anything, even on my driveway or over onto the street, let alone the street.
At the same time, you're in R A zone or R R zone, and perhaps that could be something that could be addressed, I mean, I could see being out in more of a rural agricultural zone where, you know, making, I mean, to go back to the back, that's a two-hundred-foot paved piece of concrete, that's expensive.
Yep.
And, but the other thing is, is that if you have some mud that you pick up on the way, you know, you might have some time to put that off your tires too, by the time you get up to the front, if you've got gravel in the front.
Probably, probably.
So I don't know, I don't know if it's a, I don't think I personally have a problem with this, but I have a problem with the city not being able to do anything about it if there's a problem, if it creates a problem. I mean, I guess the only thing we can do at that point is come back and take it back out of the code.
Well, yeah, and I mean, we do have...
But it doesn't address the issue for that one in person. And we do have code requirements that prevent people from, you know, tracking mud into the street, so that's covered in the code. So if somebody is doing that...
You may address the issue, so I don't think we need to, personally, I don't think we need to require, you know, an extra strip or a concrete or, gravel is nice, but I don't know if that's required, you know? Like I say, if you've got a code already, which talks about, you address the problem if they're bringing mud out to the street, saying, okay, maybe you need to put some gravel in your, in your spot there to eliminate that.
Well, see, I...
Take it case by case.
See, well, and see, I like the idea of taking it case by case, but for me, I think what I would do is, you know, I mean, if we could put something in there that says that there's more than a couple of complaints within a period of time, and the city does have the ability to go in and address it, I think I'd feel more comfortable with that. Anyhow, do you have any other questions for Royce, and then I can bring it back up here and talk about it, open it to the public, please. Thank you, Royce. This one is a request from Ryan Warner, is Ryan Warner present?
Yeah.
Can I stand and address this? Give us your name and address.
Ryan Warner, eighteen seventy-seven north, ten sixty west, Pleasant Grove.
Okay.
Dave, Royce explained everything pretty clear, I think we're gonna build an accessory building, it's about two hundred feet, but we would have to pay, but this is, this is in, it's already gravel now, so I think mud wouldn't be an issue, but...
Okay, well, thank you for coming. Open this back up to the public, is there anyone here from the public that would like to address us regarding this issue?
Well, as long as I made it here. I'm Dave McDonald, I live at thirteen eighty west, eleven hundred north, and I'm doing an accessory building right now also, and I probably have to put in about a hundred and fifty feet of concrete going back to it, and I plan on doing it eventually, come back to that, it's a secondary garage. But I guess if you're gonna park stuff in the back, it's not gonna make much difference whether there's a building there or not, you're gonna drop, if you're parking things in the back and there's mud, you're gonna drag it out, whether, I don't know what bearing a building has on it. But for the most part, people don't want to track mud back and force up their driveway to get out into the road anyway, and whether there's a building, they're not really gonna put gravel down to keep from doing that, but...
I think, I think our, where we get concerned, I mean, where I'm concerned is if you put a building back there, then you don't have a reason to drive back there, you know?
Yeah, yeah, you're gonna have more of a reason to drive back there.
So that's my only concern, not everybody drives across the driveway, you know, somebody might have a different access to it.
Different access.
So I, but I appreciate it. So, I, I, but I appreciate it, it's a good, good, good point, so, thank you.
Anybody else from the public that would like to make remarks on this? Okay, we'll close the public comment section down, bring it back up here.
Again, I, I think I would like to, you know, just approve it, you know, without, without further requirements.
Okay.
You know, as far as that goes, I agree with the gentleman back there, you know, on top of what I've already said. You know, I think no one, no one wants to be in mud, you know, if you're going to, if you're going to drive mud, they're going to take care of it.
It's right there.
Yeah, they're going to fix it, you know, type of thing. And I notice my area, when my area gets some low points, I have more gravel, there's just certain points.
We had a gravel driveway growing up, and when it got to where it was getting muddy or puddly, we bought more gravel, so...
I agree with what Scott said.
Okay, does anybody want to make a motion?
Chair, want to make a motion? I move that the planning commission recommend that, I recommend that the city council approve the request of Ryan Warner for an amendment to section ten dash eighteen dash two, park use design standards in the Pleasant Grove City Code, to remove the requirement to provide paved, paved access to a street from garages that do not serve as the primary garage, sort of a quality.
We have a motion from Commissioner Baptiste to do it in a second?
Yes, I do.
Okay, a second for Commissioner Richards, all in favor?
Aye.
Take passes unanimously. We'll move on to item number four, public hearing for a city code text amendment, city line, public hearing to consider a request by John Freeze for proposed text amendment modifying sections ten dash fourteen dash twenty-four dash one dash C, permitted and conditional uses to allow for elderly housing in the commercial sales sub-district of the Grove Zone in the Pleasant Grove City Code. Royce? Okay, so, the intent of this change is based on this property down here in the star. So, this is kind of the, one of the western edges of the city. So, this is down in the Grove Zone, the commercial sales sub-district.
Royce, this is Mr. Beasley's property, is it?
That's right, yeah, so actually you can see the, the classes out there.
So, we're all familiar with Mr. Beasley's property.
Yeah, so he's, he's been in regularly the last few years to park classes during the summer for the school district as a conditional use. So, he is looking at having this property developed, and there is currently a really housing center here, of letting it, and it's called Bell Air Center, and they're looking to expand that onto this property.
Bell Air Center is in American Fork?
Yes, right, so, the red line, let me see here, that's the American Fork boundary, so it's just right near the edge of the city. So, the, I guess the argument from the planning side, I don't know if you're getting into, is kind of based on that, the fact that this is in Pleasant Grove, and what is adjacent to it is in American Fork, therefore, different city, different zoning, different rules, different general plan. So, let's start out, seeing as the council's been very, the city council has been very focused on getting commercial development to come in, and so, in an effort to do that, actually, recently, they took a lot of the mixed housing in the area, or attempted to take a lot of mixed housing zoning, and using that to commercial, provide more, more commercial space, more opportunity for development. So, what has been proposed here is that we basically take the same area that was recently used to allow for used car sales, which you can see this right here is used car dealership now, and to allow elderly housing in that same area. So, you can see more clearly in this photo, this is facility up here. So, basically what this is, is it's almost like creating an overlay, but not really, because this is going to be a text amendment, this is going to apply to a certain area of the zone. So, when I sent this over to the city attorney, she immediately got back to me and was very concerned about this, this practice, because we have done this with the, the car sales, and she was concerned about that, and she was really expressing very deep concern about this type of practice, basically saying, yes, the zone doesn't really allow for it, but we're going to allow it in this specific area of the zone, even though it doesn't meet the intent of the order, the intent of the zone or the, or the general plan of the area. So, the Grove Zone down the southwest corner of the city is split up, you know, a couple of different zones, but since we're focusing on commercial sales, the types of uses that are allowed in that zone are office commercial, retail commercial, but not residential. So, the proposed use is a residential use that runs as a business, it'd be working with people, elderly people, to take care of them and to provide services to them, but this will be a residential use as well, because people will be living there. So, kind of reasons for recommending denial on this item is that along North County Boulevard here between State Street and Pleasant Grove, there was, yeah, Pleasant Grove Park, what's that called, Pleasant Grove Boulevard, we have a median that runs along this length of the road, so there are only breaks every so often, which provides a limited opportunity for development on this side, well, the whole side of the road, really, but since we're talking about this side, I'll focus on the west. So, when you have a break, that means that you can take a left turn into the property and a right turn, which increases the amount of traffic that a property can have. So, for commercial, that's a very good thing, because they want to have circulation of traffic. When you're talking about a residential development, you're not going to have this high of traffic flow, so the left turn is not as necessary. So, that aspect of it, see, I guess I'll get a real closer picture. So, you can see one of these stars is directly adjacent to the property, so they do have a left turn that goes into their property, which makes it really one of six locations along here where that's possible. So, that increases the plausibility of being used productively for commercial. So, also, it's very close to State Street, which makes it more accessible, even more traffic. So, I mean, it's already on a very busy road, it's a major arterial, which is North County Boulevard, and then you also have another major arterial here with State Street. So, being eight hundred and seventy feet away about to the access, that makes it even more viable, and from a planning perspective, for retail, or not well, retail, I should say, commercial use. So, you can see here, well, not super clearly, I think, here's the more photo, yeah. So, you can see here that left turn access, you can see the break, and then you actually have a kind of bold intersection here for the access, where you can go left into the property. So, since elderly housing is, is not permitted in the zone currently, but is permitted in other areas within the Grove Zone, where the mixed housing allows for it, it was not the council's intent to allow for elderly housing in this area. And of course, it's, it's the applicant's approval if they want to apply for it, and that's up to them, but from a planning perspective, staff recommends denial of this, based on the fact that it is a good prime retail location, I should say retail commercial location. It also provides an opportunity for consistency in the zone, keeping it the way it is. If we, if we approve the text amendment the way it's proposed, basically, we create more or less of an overlay, but not an overlay, it's kind of a pseudo-overlay. And having kind of been over this on a, on a previous project, just last month, for those who remember the, the project in the downtown Village Zone where they wanted to do auto sales, it's kind of a similar situation. So, it's not necessarily supported by the general plan for the commercial sales sub-district, and so, we feel like it creates kind of a spot zoning situation, because it really is just a little bit of property. So, based on that, we would recognize denial of it. So, are there any questions on the item? Commissioner's? Nope? Okay, thank you, Royce, is the applicant present?
Yes. Boy, that sounded pretty bleak.
Can you give us your...
Steve Savins, two thirty-two north, six hundred west, Provo. I own the assisted living facility, Bell Air Senior Living, that's adjacent to this property in American Fork. Do you have another shot where you can come out a little ways from that, so you can see?
Yeah, if you go, so the remote there, the up and down arrows, if you just kind of pointed at the computer there, it's on the corner of the dials. So, you want to go back up a little bit, I think? Yeah, it's a little bit, yeah.
Okay, I see.
There's a pointer, there's a pointer, there's...
Okay, got it, thank you. I, I've never been here before, planning commissioners, I thank you, Mr. Chair, for being here tonight. I spent seventeen years on the Provo City Board of Adjustments, so I know what you go through sometimes for hours and hours on some of these meetings. And to this issue, it's unique in a couple of ways. We, I am requesting that, that we do a text amendment here for this, basically, two acres on the, and I get all messed up, too, I, I still don't know what's north, south, east, and west, I imagine it's the west side.
Up is the north, that way is west.
Okay, so north is, is straight up North Canyon, okay. So, to the west, over here, the, the rest of the entire back block that's in American Fork is senior housing. There are twin homes there, there's, there are two buildings that are condos, my facility on the corner. And if I, I could just, what you want to hear is why I feel that my proposal is any different from anyone else who would like to buy these, this two-acre, basically two parcels right here in the candy cane stripes. Obviously, the auto sales is also not a permitted use in this zone, and they did receive the text amendment. The problem that I see this having is Mr. Beasley, when he bought this about ten years ago, and again, I've only, I've been your neighbor for about an inch away from your city for about twelve years is when I bought that building. Mr. Beasley bought this building about ten years ago, I believe, and he wanted to put a Big O Tire store on it. That's back when this was a dirt road past three ninety south. It was a dirt road, and then it became probably around in here a half, down to nothing. So, I realize that, that with, you know, the renovation of this whole area and this North Canyon Road property, you do need to do something different than has existed there for, you know, decades or centuries, whatever it might be. And, but literally right here, on the back fence, are all twin homes right now. These are twin homes all in here, so you have senior citizens in twin homes right over that fence. You put a Big O Tire store there with those air guns doing lug nuts all day long, it would literally drive someone crazy, they, maybe even die, I don't know. But we, and then, you know, we also would have to hear that as well, right next door, we're literally fifteen to twenty feet away from where a building could go. And so, my feeling is, is the uniqueness of this situation is that you've got senior housing, and I know it's mostly what I'm talking about is being neighborly with American Fork, because right there, you literally are twenty feet away from that fence in a twin home for whatever goes in here. Down here where the auto sales, the Shamrock Auto Sales dealership is, there on the other side of the fence is a large pond, so the houses, the twin homes are about a hundred feet away from the fence, and thus, probably not as big of a deal as far as noise goes. But, but anyway, that's my proposal, consistency with this area, this neighborhood, this two acres, would be, I feel, a soft transition into your commercial sales zone after you get past the auto dealership, and it would be consistent with what's already up in this part of the block. I, you know, it's up to you, obviously, what you'd want to do past the, the auto sales, start your commercial sales right after them, or you'd maybe want to even consider just the entire block, since it's already senior housing for about fifty-five to sixty-five percent of it right now. I'm just saying, and another, another clarification, I'm not asking to add on to my building across city lines. I would just build a new building right here on its own, Pleasant Grove, and not have any attachment to the American Fork property. So, anyway, Mr. Chair, any questions from the commissioners?
Commissioners? Any questions, if we have a problem?
What kind of building would you prepare, Mr. Chair?
Something fairly similar in size, my, my building sits on about one point three acres, so this is almost the exact same size as my building. That, I bought that, like I mentioned, after it was about eight years old, seven years old. And so, I, I would do something a little more conducive to, you know, sizing it, but about a fifty, fifty-five-bed assisted living facility.
Similar to what you have there now.
Yeah, so it'd be about thirty, thirty-five thousand square foot building.
You have a need for that, you have growth to the point where you need more?
Uh, yes, I think we're getting to a point where we're getting close to a saturation level right now, but in five to seven years, when actually my baby boom generation starts going into assisted living facilities regularly, when they'll be in their mid-seventies, I think we won't be able to keep up with the need.
Okay, any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll open this up for public remarks, comments, if anybody could speak to the side.
Roscoe Allen, seven sixty-five east, thirteen hundred north, Pleasant Grove, Utah. My question is, so this is not to purchase to start the building yet, it's to just change...
I'm thinking of buying the property from the Beesley's.
So, besides this gentleman that's interested, do we know if there's any other tax revenue that we can see benefit from selling this and getting a building on there and start increasing our, our revenue band for the city?
Um, that's not something that would be predicted.
Okay, because that would be my only suggestion, I, you know, I always take the, I'm, I'm an avid hunter, I take the thing that's there presented, especially in a time of famine, and we don't have a lot of stuff going on in the city as far as true growth, we keep pushing things off. This is an opportunity to, to grow, I don't care if it's an assisted living home or a Big O Tire, let's put the building in there that somebody wants to build, and increase in tax or renew benefit from it.
Thank you. Any other public remarks? Okay, we'll close that down, bring it back up here, Commissioner, how do you feel about this?
Mr. Chair?
Yeah?
I feel like the city council would have been pretty explicit about their desire in this area. I remember at the city council meeting where I was confirmed a member of the planning commission, the commission had recommended approval of a storage facility in this area, which was to that council, and I'm pretty sure they would do the same, recommend approval of this building as well.
I have just some issues with the idea that you're going to modify the use of the area significantly to the residential, which we get some tax revenue from, of course, which is, you know, a, a good point, but it's going to be property tax revenue, not sales tax revenue, as far as my understanding is, and that's a concern mine.
Anybody feel comfortable making a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I move the planning commission recommend that the city council deny the request of John Freeze for an amendment to section ten dash fourteen, dash twenty-four, dash one, dash C, dash two, permitted and conditional uses in the Pleasant Grove City Code, permitting use under twelve ninety-four, elderly housing facilities in an area bounded by State Street, North County Boulevard, Center Street, and the American Fork City Order, based on the following findings, that the proposed text amendment does not meet the intent of the Grove Zone Commercial Sales Sub-District, would create a spot, and would create a spot zone situation.
Do you have a motion from Commissioner Steele to second? A second?
I don't know if I can.
I think probably not, right? If it revolves...
Six thirty, Jeff.
He can't?
He can't, no.
I don't think so.
All right, you know, leave your motion hanging for, for a second, try to, so I know we can't, you know, we can't limit the text amendment to just a specific parcel, right, it has to be the whole area. It has to be the whole area. I will second.
So we have a motion from Commissioner Steele and a second from Commissioner Carden. Fall in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
But let's go ahead and let's, let's do that by going again. So we've got a aye from...
She can't, she can't.
Gotcha, by the way. Commissioner Steele?
Aye.
Commissioner Carden?
Aye.
Commissioner Carden?
Aye.
Armstrong, aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Richards, aye.
No.
No from...
No.
Commissioner, okay.
She can't.
That's it, so. So Commissioner Baptiste says a no, Commissioner Nelson says no. So that passes. Fails, I guess. The, the fail passes. The next one is item number five, which is a public hearing for a general plan amendment citywide. Public hearing to consider amending the Pleasant Grove City General Plan, amending chapter seven Parks and Recreation regarding and adopting the Parks and Recreation Master Plan as appendix G, and regarding and adopting the bicycle and pedestrian master plan as appendix A, H, and removing text regarding cultural programs and amending chapter nine Public Services and adding text regarding cultural programs.
Okay, commissioners, as we mentioned in our work session, this item of five, six and seven are all leading up to item eight, which is the proposal to approve a site plan for the multi-use trail system. We identified earlier when this item came forward to the city that it would be necessary for us to make amendments to our existing plans to allow for this site plan to be approved. So this is kind of a housekeeping type of a thing. It's also a good chance for us to look at a couple of chapters in the general plan and put in some updated verbiage that was needed. So what I'm going to do, rather than to display a whole lot on the screen, I will show briefly what we have here that is being affected, or you will see and talk more about when we address these plans and the proposed amendments, what it exactly is we're, we're trying to do. So this is affecting the request to approve a trail system that would go from about fourteen fifty north, Murdoch Drive area, and go up into the foothills areas all through here. So it's about a hundred and thirty acres approximately that would be affected in this area, most intensively down on the southern portion, but also a connection that would go further towards Grove Creek. So the, the specific details on that, that site plan are not what I'm talking about here. I just wanted to bring that up, that this is why we're doing this. So, let's see, it looks like we got to there. There's also some detail that will go along with it. So, anyway, it is because of this request, which you will be dealing with in a future item, that we are wanting to amend the general plan, the bicycle and pedestrian master plan, and the parks and recreation master plan. So what I will do, in your packets, you have a copy of the general plan, chapter seven and nine, and there are a few extra copies over on the desk there if anybody else would like to grab. But I'm going to briefly review, and you can follow along with me, the, the verbiage that is either being stricken or added to. And I'll start with chapter seven. In seven point two, we're just fixing the verbiage there to fit with what, what we're trying to do and what, what we did do in adopting the Parks and Trails Master Plan, and also the trails, excuse me, the Parks and Recreation and the Bicycle and Trails Master Plan. So if you would like me to read through seven point two, I can. But I think you can basically see that it's just putting into effect that the Parks and Recreation Master Plan and the Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan are now being put in as appendices to the general plan. Listed there at the end of that paragraph in seven point two. Thus, they will be adopted as a part, a part of the general plan and have greater teeth in their effectiveness and, and the need for any future amendments to go to amending the general plan.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
And just, and, and mine is...
Uh, okay, let me see where...
We have plural on plans?
You're right, okay.
Since, since they added in...
Thank you. So the change that you have are... All right, moving on to page eighty-seven of chapter seven. We're just correcting an address that was listed wrong on that for the community center or the old rec center. Page eighty-eight, just listing appendix G, referencing appendix G Parks and Recreation Master Plan. Then under recreational trails, second paragraph, adding the verbiage with more detail provided in appendix H Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan. And then at the bottom of number two, where we're talking about the Bonneville Shoreline Trail and Trailhead Parks, adding a sentence which says additional multi-use trail systems will be considered to ensure connectivity to major trail systems and add a variety of difficulty and enjoyment for trail users along the foothills east of the city. Okay, and then moving forward to seven point six on page ninety-one. In the past, cultural programs, strawberry days, those type of things were under the Department of Leisure Services. In the last few years, we made change in the city organization. So it is now the Department of Parks and Recreation and, or is it just parks?
Parks.
Parks and Recreation. The leisure services ended that. In other words, the cultural programs, the arts, responsibility for events, was shifted to the library, which is now the Library and Arts Department. And so in that, this function is no longer under the, the purview of Parks and Recreation. We're moving this verbiage to another chapter, chapter nine, and we'll talk about that a little bit. So we're just striking all of that verbiage out of this chapter, as well as the, the associated goals, which would be on page ninety-four. All of those goals that follow that issue would go with that to chapter nine. Otherwise, in the goals on pages ninety-two and ninety-three, it's just updating the verbiage a little bit, recognizing that we have already approved a Parks and Recreation Master Plan and a Trails Plan as well, and just changing the, the name of the department from Leisure Services to Parks and Recreation. So really, it's just a house cleaning, updating the verbiage in, in the plan. So any questions with chapter seven? There's not really a whole lot that we're doing of substance. It's just basically saying we want to adopt these two master plans as appendices and just recognize that throughout that chapter. Any questions to that? Okay, so we'll move on to chapter nine, which is Public Services. And as mentioned, the, the main reason why we're amending this chapter is because we're moving that verbiage of cultural programs from chapter seven to be under the heading of chapter nine. And so I'll just briefly run through the, the changes there. Under nine point two, City Administration, there was a little bit of verbiage that although it doesn't have a lot to do with the multi-use trails plan, in that we're reviewing and updating chapter nine, we figured might as well change where it needed to be changed. And so there's verbiage there that talks about the new civic center. And when this was done, there was some concepts being formulated for a new civic center which have since been abandoned. So we're changing the verbiage there, talking about planning for new and/or improved city facilities in the downtown area will occur as needed. So even though we do have some forward motions still going in that direction, it's not specific as to an overall civic or city center master plan. Okay, and then reflecting that same thought, under nine point three on page one oh two, is just talking about what the verbiage that fits better with the police station concept. And then moving forward onto...
Ken?
Yes?
On nine point three, you have in there under Police Department, Department of Service of City and Living as well.
Oh, boy, okay, yeah, there's a good catch. Okay. Yeah, we'll just, I, let's go ahead and add the scratching out of that line, the last line on the first paragraph.
Good catch.
Okay? Then moving on to page one oh four, just to be a little more consistent with where the fire department is at right now, just scratching out some verbiage about adding additional department staff. And then we just move to... Page one oh seven, at the, at the bottom of the page there under Library, just again acknowledging the reality of the civic center discussion. And then nine point six, being a section added in, is the cultural programs that we're moving over in chapter seven. And so that's basically it, other than the, the associated goals verbiage for moving that to cultural programs, with the added to the goals.
We should go ahead and fix this as well as well over here. The first paragraph in one of our, sorry to backtrack that a little bit. The, it says, the first paragraph in, on page one oh four, it says, "Fire Department has been organized into functional groups or teams made up from part-time volunteers with a captain and engineer and emergency medical care specialists and firefighters." Obviously, we have a full-time fire department, have had for quite a while. And so as long as we're cleaning this up, let's clean it up.
Right, okay. So if we say the fire department has been organized, has, is made up of a captain, engineer, emergency medical...
Just get that part-time out of there.
Yeah. So to be honest, we didn't go carefully through this entire chapter. We just found those things that we knew we needed to change, and a couple of things along the way popped out, so. Okay, so that's a good catch. Okay? All right, that, that's basically it for, unless you see anything else for chapter nine.
Okay, you have a problem? Keep going.
So that, that would be this first item, which would be amending the general plan, chapter seven and nine.
Are we okay to go ahead and combine where we're doing five? Can we do six and seven right now with this?
Uh, we, well, the discussion can continue, but ultimately, we need a separate motion for amending each individual plan.
Yeah, we'll do separate motions, I think, just in, in sake of time, considering they're all kind of the same thing. Let's go ahead and have you present on six and seven as well.
Okay, so then, I'm sorry, I know they did it in front of me. Which one is six?
Six is the public hearing to consider amending Pleasant Grove City Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan, adding appendix B, multi-use trails, systems, maps and trail details.
Okay, so just what I've shown you on the screen here is going to be appendix B. It's actually going to be, I think we had a, a repeat of the same slide here, but there was intended to be this one plus a closer out version. Do you have those on the other?
Yeah, if you keep going.
Oh, looks like we missed out there. There's actually another... Do you have in your packet a close-up of the trail system in the Wade Springs Park area?
It's interesting, I mean, from my packet, oh, no, no.
That's number, number eight.
Well, this one...
Item eight has the close-up of the site plan.
Okay, so appendix B would be this overall map that shows the entire larger area. It, it also includes, as in item eight, the close-up of the Wade Springs area, where we have intensive trails, which is basically this area down and through here. And then also the details chart, which is this. So that would be appendix B, that would be added to the bicycle and pedestrian master plan. We're not changing any of the other verbiage in that plan. It is a fairly lengthy and detailed plan, and this is kind of more specific to one project. So we figured just by adding an appendix to that, it would suffice. So that's the bicycle pedestrian master plan.
And seven?
Okay, then seven is basically the same thing, except for you have in front of you the, let's see, I'm missing my packet.
Item number seven is public hearing to consider amending the Pleasant Grove City Parks and Recreation Master Plan, amending text and goals regarding Wade Springs Park and multi-use trail system.
Okay, so in your packet, it would begin after the appendix B information. It starts with page six of nine is the proposed changes to the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. So it shows the, the title page, which basically is just giving an updated year listed on there. Then on page, in chapter four of that, or page seven of nine on your packet, there's discussion about Wade Springs Park. And so we're just adding in, in a couple of occasions, mention of the multi-use trail system in conjunction with Wade Springs Park.
Ken, I think there's some conversation before the meeting, that, I know there's a lot of issues regarding the trails and I guess the houses and the law, I can't remember the industry. There's a lot of opposition at the public, and a lot, I said, I think those issues have been resolved, is that correct? With the residents out there?
Well, we will get into more detail on that with, with the site plan, and that would be the best part to talk about that. Okay, and then turning the page to page eight of nine in your packet is, are the goals for the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. And just as we did in chapter seven in the general plan, we moved the cultural programs goals out of that section in the general plan. We're just going to take it out, completely out of this master plan. And the same thing with the, the next page of goals, those things that relate to cultural programming. So that's basically it. It's very little amendment required in, in either one of these plans, but just designation or an acknowledgement of that we do have multi-use trails planned.
Okay, commissioners, do you have any questions here? Okay, thank you, Ken. Is this one where we need to open it up to the public for amending of our master plan?
Yes, well, there'll need to be public hearings available. If you want to call it a public hearing for all three, but, or if you want to do it separately, I think we'll...
Let's open it up for all three. If, if you're here to speak to this as a member of the public, make sure that you tell us which one you're, you're addressing of those three, since we'll be looking at them at the same time.
Let me just be clear for all of our sakes, maybe, especially the public. We are not yet discussing the site plan. That will be the next item. The site plan and its details, its impacts on the neighborhoods, how it's going to be used, how the trails are going to be set up and built, all of that is going to be at the next item. So I would recommend that public comment not address those issues at this time. More specifically, what we're doing now is general planning, master planning. Should the general plan reflect the things that we just talked about? Should the master plans reflect that there will be a multi-use trail? Without giving any detail as to what that is exactly, should the, should we even address the concept? That's all we're talking about at this time.
Right, okay, okay. Let's open this up to public comment. Anybody like to address this?
Bell Road, seven sixty-nine East, thirteen hundred North, Pleasant Grove. We're pretty close to the trail. I just had a clarification question on this one. If we're, if we're not discussing the plan until the next item, why are the details of the plan in appendix P? And is it possible to also see a copy of appendix G and H from item five?
Well, I think what we're talking about as far as this goes, this would be like saying, are we going to have bike paths in the city? Right? We're not talking about specifically where it is, but if you go back to appendix P, it's talking about how a trail would be built, but it doesn't say exactly where it is.
That says where it is.
I was looking at double more appendix.
That's, that's my only question here, is if we're not talking about the detail, it seems like it's...
Well, then I suppose be, that is a correct observation. So I suppose it would be appropriate to open up discussion and perhaps presentation first by Deion in regards to the site plan, then we can come back and make motions on it all.
Okay, let's do that. We've all, we've all told on this... We've all, we've all told on this, we will go ahead and, and move on to the next one, we'll come back and blow down this one after the, after we address the site plan?
Right.
Yes, it's Kevin Rook?
Dale, Dale Road.
Dale Road. And you want to give us...
And seven sixty-nine east thirteen hundred north.
Okay, seven sixty-nine east eighteen...
Thirteen hundred north.
Thirteen hundred north, okay, thank you, Dion.
Thanks.
Let's go ahead and move forward with agenda item number eight, the site plan at fourteen fifty north Murdock Drive. Public hearing to consider approval, yes. We'll close the public session regarding the, we may open that back up, but for the time being, we're going to close this public session regarding items number six, five, six, and seven. Up and down, Aaron?
It's the up and down, on the middle.
On the middle, there we go. Then we're going to hear now, a public hearing for site plan at fourteen fifty north Murdock Drive in Big Springs subdivision, our neighborhood, public hearing to consider approval of a site plan for Pleasant Grove Multi-Use Trail System on approximately twenty-eight point eight acres located at approximately fourteen fifty north Murdock Drive in the R one twenty single-family residential zone, as well as approximately one hundred acres located outside and east of the Pleasant Grove City boundaries in the foothill areas.
So we're back. Hopefully, we're a little more prepared this time.
You got less people this time. I did that for your benefit, I could have brought more, Ken.
Sorry, I think I'm catching a cold, but. So since our last planning commission held on August thirteenth, we've been addressing some of the concerns that the neighbors have had. We took a lot of their comments and their recommendations, and we've been working towards those. A few things that we did shortly after the meeting was we cut the ties with NICA. This wasn't very popular with the biking committee, because it was money for donation towards the park, but it also tied us to having a large event there, guaranteeing one event a year. So we, as staff, administration, felt that that was not a wise decision at the time. That's really not why we're building the trail, we're building the trail for our residents. The other thing that was required from planning commission was the site plan, which has been developed. And, and then one of the recommendations was to face the trail, and that's what we've done. So this is kind of an overall view of the trail system from Grove Creek to Wade, or to Cedar Hill. Let's see if we can get, gosh, there we go.
Dion, when you cut the ties with NICA, that helped a lot of the residents there?
I believe so, you know, that, that actually answered a lot of the questions as far as parking, especially for a big event. So we're no longer looking at using this basin for parking, we're no longer looking at those types of things. So as far as the city's concerned, we're not tied with any type of event. So, this is the overall, let's see. So this is phase one. This is what we're proposing, the site plan consists of right now, currently is, is phase one. So we're going from the Grove Creek Trailhead to approximately nineteen hundred north along the foothills. Maybe it's a little bit different on Ken's thing, but I don't know if you're all familiar with Molly's, but it goes to just some Molly's there in the foothills. We had an open house on November nineteenth inviting the residents, we had over forty residents attend the open house, had some good discussion with a couple of the property owners. I think some of the things that were, that are addressed in the site plan, sorry, that are not addressed in the current site plan is the drainage to the north of thirteen hundred north. Regardless whether the trail goes through or not, those are issues that the city needs to address. And we're in communication with the Public Works Director, Dagan, we've discussed those a little bit. We haven't gotten, not made any plans, but we're planning on doing that, either this winter or next spring.
So it's an existing problem regardless of whether the trail gets developed or not?
Historically, it's been a problem for quite a few years, so...
What is the problem?
Sorry?
What is the current problem with the drainage?
So currently, and I'm going to shake this pen to death, so bear with me. So right here, I believe, is a rail that comes down, there's a clay pit that comes across here, they both tie into eight fifty. All that runoff comes right down through here into these homes. But it, it has in the past, recently it has not. So we're going to go in and put a swell, we're recommending a swell, kind of burn through here and get it, but dip back down into the original drainage. So that's something that we're going to do regardless, and that needs to be addressed. Let me get back to my list before I get off topic here. So one of the questions at the first planning commission meeting was construction of a park outside the city boundaries. On investigation, and we're currently working through the process of a zone compliance permit with Utah County, it goes through all their major departments, they all look at it. Currently, it's been approved by Public Works, and it's in the Health Department's hands, and actually at the state level with the Department of Water Quality. That will go on to their fire marshal, and then their community development plan, and the department for approval. Metro is probably the largest landowner, Metropolitan Water District of Salt Lake and Sandy. Met with them yesterday morning, they have a little bit of things for us to add to the site plan that they would like to see included, but we're working through that process also. Back to the drainage, like I say, near eight fifty east, we're going to have to address that regardless. One of the other things that they were looking at is a fire break in the same area. And my recommendation, as far as staff goes, is not going to cut a fire break road. That will just promote more use in the area, so we'll go and cut the weeds down, or not the weeds, but the bushes in that area, so we can get a brush block right there. So we'll work closely with the fire department on that. One of the other issues at the last planning commission meeting was the sensitive lands. And J U B is here with us, they've done the site visits, the walkthroughs. We do have some areas that move, mostly near the springs area. And then they've also identified two possible wetland locations in there, which we've designed a trail around to avoid those. So, some of the... Let's see, I'm going the wrong way, figure this out. So this is just an example of some of the detailed drawings that we have. We need to restrict access into this area for non-motor, for motor, from motorized vehicles. This will be only allowed for non-motorized, the Metropolitan District City crews. I believe it's the Alpine Jordan Ridge or something like that. There's a few other utilities that will have access to here to do the regular inspections and maintenance. So, but the rest of it will be restricted. So our goal is to get the four-wheelers out, vehicles, motorcycles, all those types of things. Access issues in the neighborhood, this was another issue. I think the majority of the concern was with, I may be speaking wrong, was with a large event. I've had communication with some of the neighbors. Currently, we have illegal use, right, in this area, right? If I can get to the right spot, let's see. Wrong pan. Right in about here, I believe. There, there actually, it's a lot, a vacant lot, and there's residents going through there. We would like to deny the access through that area, whether it's with a post-rail fence or boulders or something until that resident decides to build. And then, you know, we'll work with them as far as moving the gates, or, or sorry, the fence or whatever needs to be done. One of the things we show on our site plan is there's, there's different types of ways to deal with access, whether it be the gates, the stepover gates, rocks. Metro's asked us to use primarily rocks and then post-rail fence, they do not like the idea of the stepover gates on their property. So we're, we're working through those with them. So as far as the, the access in the neighborhoods, there's two areas. There's eight fifty north and north Murdock, that, these two are dead-end streets. North Murdock will, some future day go through and connect into eighteen hundred north. And eight fifty is just a dead end for city utilities to get into the, to the springs up there. My recommendation is we leave it open to the neighborhoods, but we post signs, it's resident parking only, to keep those types of things. If we get into the, to where the parking becomes an issue, then we would restrict access at those locations. So that's kind of how we, we thought we would deal with that.
So the idea is that you're going to try to keep any parking out of there, but you want the neighborhood to be able to use the trail system on their bicycle, essentially to ride in off of the end of that street?
Right, so just like up here on this cul-de-sac, where we have the illegal use now, we have the same issue on eight fifty and down here on Murdock. So if we limit the access to non-motorized, we have a lot of residents that utilize this currently, and they'll jump on, you know, instead of having to go to one, the trail has to gain access. We'd like to leave that option there, but if it gets to be out of hand, and where we're having people come in and park, then we would have to restrict it. A couple of other things, we're dealing mostly with the Grove Creek Trailhead, where noise, the curfew, and also lightning. And we've, we have permission from the Forest Service to address all today these. So those would be installed with the development of the trail. So, the other big one, I think, was the shooting in the area. And we'll sign what we can sign as far as city property. Metro's okay with assigning their property, but the Forest Service is allowed. And so pretty much everything east of the Bonneville, the proposed Bonneville Shoreline Trail allows shooting. It's allowed in those areas, so, with the exception of our water tank, that would be in city limits. So that's kind of where we're at, open for questions, comments.
When you're saying that you're having difficulties with some of the issues, is that with the development of the property only, or is that just stuff that would need to be maintained by the city?
What do you mean by...?
Well, you said, at the very beginning, you said that you were still working through some things with different entities.
Oh, like Metro? Yeah, there, there are things, or minor things, like they would like to see, if we're going to put a garbage can, they would like to see a garbage plant, put a garbage can in a detailed drawing somewhere to this. It's minor things.
Okay, and that, and that's the stuff that you're having to work through, it's not anything...
Yeah. There is also one other thing that I will bring up. So off of that cul-de-sac, up here on the east side, right in here, and this was all my responsibility, and I failed to do it, but there is a portion of property there that is owned by the Bank of Pleasant Grove. I have not been in communication with them, and this trail does, is proposed to go through that property. And if it does not, I know there's other plans also, possible plans, then we would re, just redirect it, direct that trail around that property, so...
I wonder, question, on losing, dropping the one partner in this, in this project, what does that do for the project as far as financial or support, or were they, were they being involved in the maintenance of the park, or...
No, not necessarily.
What was exactly the partner, the partnership that you just...
It was, it was mostly just a donation, like I say, to, to help sponsor and promote the park. What we're looking at for funding for this is impact fees, which are one-time monies that can only be used for new development. We can't use those funds on anything else, so...
And how much did you lose by breaking up that contract?
It says around five thousand dollars, so...
This doesn't mean that we couldn't work with them for an event in the future, it just means that we have no obligation to them. It just means that if we wanted to, to do that, we could sit and set our own terms for that participation, and if it didn't work, we could say, no, we're not, not going to continue that, right? Just like with any other entity who would want to come and use one of our facilities.
Yeah, so there's a process that they would need to go through, the, I, the city would not go out and propose that.
Right, we're not going to propose that.
If they were to come in, there's a process that they have to go through, the special event permits.
Like anybody else.
They have to have permission from all landowners and everything else, so, yeah, but we wouldn't be promoting that.
Right, sounds good.
Dion, tell me again about the problem, making Pleasant Grove, is there a bike Pleasant Grove?
Well, I've talked with, there is not, I believe it wells Fargo now, or something like that. I haven't looked into it, like I say, this is, this was kind of last minute on my part.
I assume it's a property they took over?
It is, so it was a piece of, a portion of property that Metro owned, and they had to straighten out some of their lines and things, and so through the process, they ended up with it.
It was over.
What was the other question, or was that it?
That was it.
Okay.
So Dion, you mentioned that, that we have motorized vehicles that are already going illegally in there. Do we have something in place if we're going to hopefully stop this from happening before we...
There is one area right off eight fifty east that we need to address, and we'll probably address that at the same time we address the drainage in that area. We're having some vehicles go up and through there now. A lot of it's pretty tight, although we do have some access issues on the north end coming in from Cedar Hills. But they're also working on gates and those types of control measures.
Hello, do we have any questions for Dion? Thank you. Yep. Okay. Now, what we're going to do is we're going to open this up to public comment. If you would, please be careful not to repeat what concerns, if somebody else brings it up and has handled it, what keeps it from getting too redundant. And let's limit the time for remarks to, you know, at most like five minutes. Thank you. Yeah, make sure that you state your name and address when you approach it.
My name is Rod Ryrie, I own the property at, we're at twelve thirty-eight North One Thousand East, which is this vacant piece of property right here that Dion was speaking about. My concern, I will just briefly say that our concern is that we are going to be building there. There is an illegal trail there, at the time, our concern is that people continue to use our property as...
Access point.
As an access point to the trail, number one, so we appreciate any cooperation with a fence or some sort of barrier between us and the trail. I also want to speak about this entire section of trail right here. When it was initially proposed at the previous planning commission meeting, when I, when we purchased the property in May, a number of the neighbors had asked us if we'd heard about this trail park, and we said, no, don't know anything about it. And they said, well, it's going to be so far to the north of you, it's not going to matter, it won't affect you at all. Someone else said, oh, it's going to be so far to the south of you, it's not going to matter. And then when it came to the planning commission meeting, I looked up a map and saw that it was literally, literally feet from our property, and not only our property, but two and three residences to the south. One of the residents is not able to be here because he's on active duty. Our concern is just that, that section is literally, again, feet from our property. I know it's not, it's not the city's problem, but our homeowners association prohibits us from putting up any kind of fencing in that area because they want to take it for natural beauty. And I've spoken with Dion about that particular section, and I believe there was some communication that it may or may not be necessary. Originally, in the original planning commission meeting, Jason had indicated to me after the meeting that that, that portion of trail was the only flat spot in the hundred-plus acres where a staging area and starting point could be built for the use of a NICA event. And then after the meeting, the NICA money was pulled. And so with that understanding that the NICA money is pulled, and the NICA events are not, are not going to be bound by, by NICA any longer, my question again is, what is the problem? my question again is, what is the purpose of just that small little section of land right there? There's an access point here, sorry for my shake. There's an access point here as well as right here. And, um, our concern is just this section here and would ask that the, the site plan be amended to, uh, remove this section here. With regard to this section of, of property that's owned by the bank, um, it is owned by Wells Fargo. My wife and I are in a negotiation with them to purchase that piece of property. It is fifty-five feet wide, begins here and seven hundred and forty feet long. And it goes about, about that, that length there. We're in negotiation to purchase that, um, mostly to extend our backyard a little bit outside the HOA purview, but also to create more of a barrier between us and the park. We're not opposed to the park conceptually. In fact, I think, we think it'd be a great asset to the community that we're about to build in, yeah, build our dream home in. Uh, our opposition is just that one section that is just a, a few feet from three priority lines.
Anybody else?
Um, Delro, uh, seven sixty-nine east, thirteen hundred north. My property is, I'm trying to do the laser pointer.
That's the first one that looks like the big fat in.
Okay, so we own the property right here. Next, also has Ray Lyons, he can't make it tonight, his daughter's leaving on a mission next week and they're, um, going, doing some visits around the area for shooting bees. And, uh, Scott Van Eyder is just up here from us as well. So there's, there's a few issues. And, and first of all, I wanna thank Dion Giles. I came to the open house, uh, which was the first we'd heard of, of the whole project. We've been there for five years, so we missed the initial planning review. But Dion's been fantastic, he's answered a lot of the questions we had at the start. And really, this is just to kind of make sure some points are raised at this stage and kind of don't slip through the net. So I had to make a few notes we were going through. So the, the first one is the, the trails, um, right here do actually create a downward path on the hill. And when I spoke to Dion, uh, at the planning meeting, uh, at the kind of open house that was going on a few weeks ago, he indicated, or we kind of looked at the plans and found that there hadn't been anything done to kind of tailor to the runoff here, to kind of direct the way from the homes. Now, since we've been there five years, there hasn't been anything in the basements, but Ray Lyons had to literally kind of relandscaped his backyard. He was digging his, his kind of yard out of his basement every, every year. So he had to create a barrier there. And this is, I don't know that it's gonna be a significant impact, but I, I just, we're kind of very concerned that with kind of creating downward paths here, that it's gonna bring more water down that way and could have an impact. And, and we just wanna make sure that, that kind of studies have been done and that that's not gonna create a problem. It does go extremely close on this, this upward climb here, which is gonna be, you know, one of the slowest parts of, of the trail. Does go within kind of twelve, fifteen feet of backyards. And there is actually currently a trail, it's not marked on, on city plans, but there is a, a kind of, the fire road where it starts up here and runs up the hill. It branches up to the left and is actually a, a kind of watched-out fire road that kind of goes down the back of the properties here, which I believe was used in the fires about twelve, fifteen years ago that came down on the, on the foothills before we arrived. But, um, I said Ray Lyons will be able to provide more information on that. The, the second, um, kind of concern is there are actually bullet holes in the house, uh, in the, in the shed. Yeah, you'll laugh at this, it's, it was pretty concerning. There's, uh, there's a shed just to the, um, east of Ray's property, just a kind of little half-high, eight-foot tall shed. He's had to patch bullet holes on the side of that that had come down from Hunters on Mountain. For them to get there, they would have had to have passed kind of five to ten feet above the ground in this area to, to kind of make that impact. So that's, I know there's not much we can do about, about putting kind of signs up here, but it is a, a safety concern there that, that, you know, it's happened. And with the Van Eyders, they've also had bullet holes in their gutter in the top of their property, which would require kind of the same line of sight. So I don't know if we can do anything about that. I don't know that it's addressable, but it's a, just kind of wanna make you aware of it. And the final one, uh, the parking signs, I know there's a concern from quite a few of the residents, just in the general area, kind of, I guess, north of, of the church here, that the streets could become lined. And, and putting up signs is, is excellent. We were told at the, at the open house, those actually aren't enforceable though, that no vehicles can be sighted unless they've been there for over forty-eight hours. And so is that really?
That may be true based on our current code, but I, I am positive that we would address it.
That could be amended?
With code if there, you know, if a problem turns up. I mean, I'm sure you're, you're gonna have to come and talk to the city council and say, help, we need it, we've got a problem, so.
Hope not, if it's necessary.
Well, if there were one, I, I, I'm sure, I mean, if it were me, I would be, uh, so.
Okay, so really it's then just, one is kind of the proximity of that uphill stretch, just kind of how close it is. And the second really is, is the runoffs.
Okay. Would it be appropriate to have JV, if they're here, to ask them to go ahead and, and talk to us about that right now? And wanna hop up and talk to us for a minute? Now, he's concerned about, about these, these stretches that are, are coming this way, but it sounds to me that Dion has talked about building a berm right here to make it so that all of this doesn't come this direction, but so that it, it drains down here. Is that what you guys are talking about?
Yeah, and I, I feel confident that we could, we could address that with some sort of berm or, or drainage feature that, that could handle that. I am not fully aware exactly what, um, they're gonna do with the public works coming up, but, um, that's something we can talk to them and they'll get to see what can be done in that area to prevent that, Dion, happening. Just as we've discussed this with, uh, Dagan, city engineering and some of the options that we have. So currently, the road, the maintenance road that goes up to the springs kind of forces into the hill. So you channel, so you have your, good analogy is your sidewalk and your driveway and the gutter. So on your driveway when it rains, you don't see a big runoff, but it all channels into the gutter. And when you get to gutter, it all collects and goes pretty rapid. That's what we're having a problem with on this road. And so what we need to do is take and taper that road to the outside so that what water comes here just runs supposedly. And then, and then put in a swell and a berm, uh, at the bottom of that, on the south side of that whole property going down. Natural drainage there.
So this, this looks to me like this is giving us an excuse to actually look at it and do some engineering.
Yeah, you know, I, I, I'm confident we can do this.
Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Yeah.
So on the two people that are involved, is there a reason why the trail is posed so close to property line? And with the one individual that says he's in the negotiations with the person that ran it, so the trail is not gonna go through? If he chooses not to allow you to go through that trail, what is your plan B?
So I'm gonna make somebody mad right now. So originally, this was designed to allow some type of event because of NICA's involvement. Since then, we haven't changed the plan. So as far as the city's concerned, if Mr., uh.
Ryrie.
Ryrie, I was gonna say Ryines, but I know that's Lyons and Ryrie, I'm messed up, so. Those are the two people I've been communicating with. Mr. Ryrie purchases this property, we don't have an option there. He is the landowner and the trail will come up just in this area right here.
And it'll stay there?
Well, it will tie onto the, to the Bonneville Shoreline Trail, to the access road or the maintenance road that's kind of there. So does that answer your question?
Jennifer? This orange one, that's the, that's the Bonneville Shoreline Trail. These are the, are the mountain bike trails right there. And so what it would mean is it would mean that they would have to hook in earlier to Bonneville Shoreline Trail.
And the reason you're not doing that now is 'cause this is not owned by us?
Well, no, I, and so let me restate something. I've talked with Metro, they're pretty comfortable with our plan right now on their property. I have not communicated with the bank. So, um, you know, that could go away. The advantage that we have as a city of having, it's about four hundred additional feet of trail, so.
It provides more trail for us instead of just running on a dirt road?
Yes.
So, so that, you said that you, you designed it with a, a different partnership? So if, if citizens are wanting you to push it out away from their property lines, is that possible or is that not possible?
So currently, and Kim can correct me if I'm wrong, I believe we really don't have any type of ordinance for trails. What we're going by is the current design standards, I guess, in the developed areas down, like where we have trails down here in the grove and where we're offsetting the property ten feet. So that's what we try to do with this whole thing. Now, the way it shows on this plan on Ryrie's property, we're on, actually on the corner of the property. The trail's gonna need to be moved in that section anyway regardless, um, because it does cross right across his corner.
So our plan is to keep it ten feet away?
That's our plan is to keep, well, that's our recommendation from community development is to keep any trail ten feet away from any property.
Okay, and that, is the Murdoch Trail ten feet away from all the houses or, or the?
Oh, at least. About a hundred foot buffer there, so. Pick me on your side.
So, so none of these represent current trails, right? These are all gonna be established builds?
Yes and no. There are some of the portions of the trail that show here are on existing trails, but they need a lot of work. They're not, they're not designed right, we're getting runoff, we're.
Well, the ones to the closest to the property lines, are those gonna be built or those?
They would be built.
So those would be brand-new trails?
They would be future trails, yes.
So, so moving them over if, if, you know, if, if it, if it, if that kind of, if the conversation goes that way, how much could you move it over it or, or could you not?
We would, whoops, sorry. We would probably connect right here, so you would not have, getting brother bacon right in the head. So we would not have this, this section right through here.
But some of the complaints is from the other gentleman that lives over in the houses.
So down in here?
Yeah.
We are well over twenty-five feet away from any existing landscape. We're actually fifty feet from most property right.
Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you.
Uh, Jason Kelly, five eighty-two, uh, east, seventy north, uh, here in Pleasant Grove. So I'm the guy who has been rubbing everybody wrong for a year and a half now or whatever. I just wanna address a couple of the comments that were made and some of the reasons behind it and then, um, kind of just state why it's important to me and to a large part of our community. In, in terms of addressing, um, the area where we have the runoff issue over here, just a couple of comments, um, he, the gentleman, I'm sorry, what was your last name again?
Row.
Row, uh, Mr. Row, had mentioned that his concern, he had two major concerns in there. One was that there were downhill-going trails and the second was that there was runoff. And the reality is that how the trails are professionally designed, they're designed with what's called a reverse grade, which without getting too technical is actually a design which is made to channel runoff to keep the trails from being the channel of runoff. That's the whole kind of point of how they're designed. So the answer to both those questions is the trails will actually assist with keeping that runoff going from there and add that into addition to all of the work that's going to be done with berming it and, and, and grading it out slope. I think we can do, um, do a significant amount of work there to, to fix that drainage problem. And the trails themselves actually contribute to fixing that problem, which is, which is pretty nice. To address the issue of why we, why this four hundred or so feet is a big deal. The big deal there is for me as the head coach for our mountain bike team, and, and just for clarification point, our high school mountain bike team this next year for twenty sixteen, all trajectories put us at over a hundred riding athletes and over forty riding coaches. So that affects a pretty significant portion of our community as far as that goes. That area provides us, allows us to be able to have the full distance of an actual race course. So whether an event ever comes in or not, as a team, for me and for all the people that are involved with my team, that's really kind of important to us to be able to simulate races in our practices. And so while moving that four hundred feet up here from a general community standpoint, you know, obviously I don't wanna, I don't wanna get in a position where it's, if I have to cut off the right arm in order to get the rest of the body to go through, fine, but that is sort of cutting off the right arm in terms of what it does to our team and what it does for the ability in the future for events to come to Pleasant Grove. Should we ever want events to be interested in coming here, that little section is going to be a major factor in whether or not any race event, whether it be, whether it be trail running, whether it be triathlons, whether it be mountain biking events, that will be a very big factor in that discussion, so.
Can, can we put, I mean, could we say that we would put, uh, uh, like a split rail fence like where, along his property line right there?
That would be a question for Dion, but from my perspective, sure, it doesn't affect us at all, but.
There's actually one shown on our site plan for that, for that property.
I mean, I, I, yeah.
I, 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 just to kind of reiterate what he's saying, we're talking about four hundred feet.
Yeah, you do need to be at the mics, we're gonna do this so that we can get, get it on the record.
I'm sorry, Rod Ryrie again. We're talking about four hundred feet and we're talking about over a hundred acres of land use here. There's no other place in that entire mass of property you could draw in another trail of four hundred feet. That's, that's my question.
Jason, what, is there any chance that we could like come and join here and then go along the Bonneville Shoreline Trail and then drop back off it?
So from a, from a practice perspective, yeah, we could figure, I'm sure we can figure something out. From the ability to have a future event come here, no. This, this area represents a, a flat area where, which is vital and we've been to a few races. It's vital to have a start-finish line area that's relatively flat. There is actually no other area at all from Grove Creek Trailhead to our border with Cedar Hills that provides that. So, um, so if we ever, if we ever in the future as a city would want to even consider having that kind of, you know, tax income come to the city, that's, that's vital for that, so.
Okay. Thank you, Jason.
Ross Guahan, I haven't moved, I still live at seven sixty-five east. So thank you first and foremost that everybody did the public meetings. I think a lot of our questions and concerns have been addressed. But just based on the, here's the concern, and I don't mean to put anybody down, but JV, I believe is the name of the firm that came in and did this work. If they missed a runoff on a berm, what else has been missed? That's, that's, that's what Dion mentioned.
No, no, they didn't miss that, we knew that was gonna be an issue the whole time. But JV was not asked to address the, the runoff.
Okay, then I apologize, that's my, I'm misunderstanding as a, as a concerned citizen because if we, at this point in time, without the runoff being addressed, it seems like we've gotta revisit the site plan and get approval on that first. Just because right now currently, what does happen, and I can't figure that out either, but coming down eight fifty, the mud runs off eight fifty, runs down to the next street over, which I believe is eleven hundred north and down by into the church parking lot. It currently does that. I think it's great, we're gonna build trails that can impact that, but what study has been done on that specific spot? Have we studied the berms and how we're gonna fix it?
So there's a couple of things we're dealing with here. Currently, like I said at the beginning, there is an illegal access issue right there. That's where your mud's coming from. Those four-wheelers going up and over, depositing that mud on the road when they come out after it rains. Currently, the drainage from that area goes down behind these homes. The reason that we didn't have JV address it on the site plan is because knowing how, like Jason stated, knowing how the trails are built, that's why we're building them to sustain themselves. We don't wanna go and fill in a trench every time it rains. So these are sustainable trails which deal with all of that. And, uh, the trails, the proposed trails, all three of those roads are proposed trails in one manner or another. So we would address those with the development of the trails. And so this is, after talking at the open house with Mr. Row and then after talking with, uh, Mr. Lyons at his home, I realized that we need to put in a safeguard there. And so that's when I talked with Dagan and Marty, our planning works, or our public works director, and that's, you know, something we need to do.
To keep the ATVs out?
No, the drainage.
The drainage, okay. Well, I figured that, I figured we'd be talking about putting a berm in.
I think we're gonna try a swell and a berm. I think we're gonna try a swell as a berm.
Okay.
You know, also we're...
Okay.
Now, just one point of clarification maybe before you go, is that gonna be funded by this parks and rec initial funding or is that post, public works funds that come out of the roads and the bigger concerns we have is the community?
Good question. Um, I think if, if the trail gets, gets approved, then it would be part of that portion, uh, that funds. If not, um, I mean, you're talking a couple days up there with the mini X and staff and redoing this section after we have the engineers look at it. Uh, it's not a big cost, number one, you know, we're not gonna go in and put irrigation in the landscape at all that time. We may plant some any plants with some scouts or something, but, uh, yeah, we're not, this isn't a big ticket item, so.
Okay. Thank you.
And then the, the last just question, just, and, and I know we beat this one kind of to death, is that four hundred feet, you know, that four hundred feet indicates that we're building it primarily for events, not necessarily just for the community. Because if that's the main reason why that doesn't work is only for events, I mean, 'cause, 'cause the coach even admitted that they can work around that and trust me, we work around stuff in this community all the time.
Thank you. Go ahead. Approve the podium with your name.
Hi, Linda Moniker, and I live at thirteen thirty-one North Murdoch Drive, so I'm down on the other side there.
Right over here?
I really appreciate, um, yes, the very end of the Murdoch area. Um, being involved in this to understand what's going on and I've gotten some really great emails and everything. I missed the invitation to the open house, so I apologize for that, but I have a couple just quick questions. Um, they mentioned that they're gonna, um, take Murdoch Drive and through to Cedar Hill. I've never heard that before, lived there for ten years, I'm not aware of that.
That's not, um...
Cedar Hills.
Eighteen hundred.
Eighteen hundred.
Eighteen hundred and more. Yeah, it's, it's on, on the transportation master plan.
Okay. Um, that kind of builds into what I'm concerned about. I know that we're not talking about any events currently, but, um, I kinda mentioned this at the other meeting that we had about coming up eleven hundred and that hill crest right there where the entry is into Murdoch Trail and the concern for safety of people crossing Murdoch and there's no, um, mention of that, if that's been evaluated. I know that we're not having any events, but if, even on Saturdays when they have the races and the walks that take, that are participating on that, there's a lot of parking issues right there. They come up on our street and park on our street, so I know that that's currently being used just for runs and everything like that. So, um, I also am concerned about the safety. I know that there's a lot of activity in that area down by our street and the end of those streets, um, kids like to party in that area and there's a lot of, um, motor vehicles that are in there and I was wondering who then will enforce that if it's not being enforced now to keep that area safe.
Probably the same people that would enforce other city parks, um, keep, keeping the kids out. I mean, we have a curfew on all of our parks, so I think we probably give more attention. I, you know, other people brought up guns and shooting and obviously we can't do anything above the Bonneville Shoreline Trail, but I think if anybody's shooting in here, when you get regular bike riders in there and that's illegal and they know it's illegal, somebody's there with a cell phone or pointing them, I think you're gonna, I, I mean, I, I think that this is solving some of the existing problems that you've got in my, from, from everything that I've seen as far as the presentation. I don't know about crowding or, or things like that. I think anytime that you, obviously, you know, you, you look at, at baseball games down at Discovery Park and it gets a little crowded when everybody wants to go and enjoy an amenity and I, I, I'm sure that if that gets dangerous, you know, it needs to be addressed, it, it will need to be addressed. That is not something, you know, current problems with, with the Murdoch Trail aren't something that we're really looking at with, with working on the master plan or the, the site plan for this one.
Sure, but it will impact the current plan or the current issues that are going on with Murdoch will just be exponential with this other part here.
Okay.
There's, there'll be fences, so as far as like kids going up there with cars and stuff, you're saying they go up there to party, there will be fence lines and stuff.
No, they don't go in cars, they walk up there or they go on their motorbikes or their four-wheelers and that's how they would be able, any motorized vehicle wouldn't.
I could just comment.
Yeah.
Um, I have spoken since, uh, I believe she brought this up at the last meeting, I have spoken with the county, they're the ones who regulate the Murdoch. They are looking into restriping, doing some things there at the eleven hundred north intersection to make that a little bit safer, um, hopefully, uh, regulating bikers a little more or giving them a little more warning. As far as the current use is going on in the park, uh, it's signed, no trespassing, right? We go in and we put our park rules on and we put the curfews in and no shooting, those types of things. Uh, it's a lot easier for law enforcement to go into our property and enforce those types of things, especially once they're posted. Years ago, we didn't have our curfews posted and the police department had a hard time enforcing the curfew and it would make it all the way to the judge, the judge say, "Where's your sign?" No sign. So, you know, signs do help, uh, but currently we do not have any regulations on there other than the city property, it's in city limits and it's posted, no trespassing, but there's a lot of people, including myself, that go in there, so. Uh, but it would, I think it would alleviate a lot of the problems. Um, I, uh, somebody mentioned, I think, I think it was you that said, you know, more use. I mean, the Murdoch Trail is a prime example, we had multiple problems of vandalism, the city didn't, but the canal company did, uh, they had multiple problems, just a bunch of different things. And once the trail was installed, we still have problems, but it's mostly, that guy's going too fast or there's poor ladies walking, you know, forest row is wide, it's, it's little problems like that, it's not the vandalism, it's not those types of things, so they're pretty good to call us and those, no. One thing we do have to submit with Metro, uh, is a, a maintenance plan and a state, uh, emergency plan, which will, uh, include, uh, how many patrols we put up there, those types of things. I talked with a couple members of the police department and, uh, currently we have the PIPs, the volunteer, uh, gentleman, and he's awesome on the Murdoch Trail and he can't wait to get up into this area, so I think it'll be, I think you'll see some improvement.
Yeah, I have a couple questions. Um, so we, we all love the rights of using them, um, but we have, when it's like the city limits, I'm assuming because we own that, that's the city limits, um, there's not supposed to be any shooting in city limits at all, right?
Right.
Do we have any markings to show where the city limits end?
Not out in the field, no.
Okay, so, so if somebody goes out there, they have no idea whether they're in or out of city limits?
Most people have no idea where they're at. I mean, once, you know, once you cross that road, that's, you're pretty much on Forest Service. You're gonna have some, I, I know in, in the Wade Springs area currently, we have a lot of paintball, a lot of the soft, airsoft. We have a lot of that going on. I've heard a few gunshots in there when I've been up in there. By the time, that's so thick, by the time you get...
Figure out where it's coming from.
Yeah, I know, they're up on the foothill or something, but, uh, hopefully nine-one-one, the phones, you know, a lot of people in there.
When we sign it, we're gonna go ahead and say, "No shooting on..."
Right, that will be part of the trail system rules. And it is, I mean, uh, DWR, they, they, they have rules against shooting over trails and so that would really, I mean, this whole west side of the Bonneville would be off limits for shooting.
Are we seeing all the shooting and stuff by adult and not child?
No.
So, so that's, that's... I don't know who it is.
I'm believing you.
And, and that's what I'm kinda concerned about, 'cause, um, it sounds like enforcement is gonna be by players and if there's gun, if there's gun shooting that's going into the residential and going into buildings, um, I'm really concerned about the safety of the children and the trails. So, um, how are we gonna, how are we gonna notify, or how are we gonna let people know that when we have a law that they can't shoot in city limits, especially children that need not be aware? And, um, and how are we gonna define where the boundary is where they are allowed to shoot?
That's the advantage of the trail. They cannot, by the state laws, shoot across a trail from divisional...
But do they know that?
If they passed, if they passed the hundred safety, they should, yes.
I'd already shoot them at the Bonneville.
I, I don't have that...
They are.
Sorry, just, just, I don't have that, so I don't have the goggles.
I think, well, one of the advantages that we have here is that when, when we do this, you're gonna have these specific access points. That, you know, people aren't gonna be walking, they better not be walking, I'd be mad if they're walking through my backyard. And so if they have specific access points to get in there, though, at those points, they're gonna be signed. So, so that they'll have a lot more access, I mean, a lot more what, warning or notification that there's a curfew and that there's no shooting and that there's, the, the rules that we're gonna have in place, they're gonna walk right past the signpost every single time that they access this and they're not doing that now.
Well, my, my concern is, is I know some residents that live out there and they're, they're not fenced, so I know, I've heard tons that they're going through their property and they're walking through their property. So they'll, they'll bypass whatever they need to do. So I'm, I'm just, I, I just wanted to know if you had any plans or any, any way of, you know, defining or, or educating or...
Just signage and enforcement, that's, that's pretty much what we're looking at.
Okay.
I mean, currently, I talked with one of the officers, actually this morning, about this issue on the shooting and he says it's really hard to regulate it, there's no signs. Um, yes, it's in the city limits, but all it takes is to jump across the road and they're in the Forest Service property and, um, so actually, this would make it easier to, for them to enforce. And like I say, you get a lot of users up there, it's gonna push those people shooting out.
So are we gonna have police officers on bicycles now?
Possibly, yes, that's, that's one option.
Is, is that, is that...
I mean, we have it now, they, they patrol Murdoch Trail.
On a bicycle?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks, Dion. Is anybody else that would like to make a comment here in public?
I'm Bob Bean, I live at fifteen eighty-five North Murdoch Drive. And I own fourteen acres exactly north of the city spring property. You might be using terms that you're not entirely familiar with, just a lie.
Yeah, there's a bunch of them right here.
That is my barn right there. That is the city spring property. That blue area, I believe, is the collection area for the water from the big spring.
Correct.
This used to be called the Big Springs Ranch and it took in all of this land long before we owned it. My dad bought fifty-four acres, which included this upper land clear to the spring and then below the canal. My home is not quite in sight and my shop, it isn't quite in sight, it's just barely beyond that. I have a large hundred-foot steel building right there. Um, Dion Giles contacted me, oh, must've been two years ago?
Yeah.
Big key track, but it's quite a while ago, we had a good conversation. And his original request of me was what I thought about the possibility of crossing our land up here just below the spring, some, you know, in this area. This was never discussed between Dion and I. Trying to remember whether Jason and I ever really had a conversation. I guess we did.
We had, we had the one outside the city building?
Oh, yeah, but I mean, sat down at my home and had a conversation.
Oh, no, I, I didn't come here.
I didn't think you did.
We sat down with John a couple of times.
This is, this is what concerned me. This, I watched you do it and I don't take the care of marking it out, but, you know, as things have gelled a little bit and we've thought a lot about it, I'm really, I'm not convinced that I want this to happen. I don't care. I don't wanna throw water on your project. I'm, I'm, I think it's probably a really good thing. I'm not a viper and I'm not opposed to what you're doing, uh, but I don't think I want you to cross this property. Well, up in the top here, I don't care. What is this red line?
That, that's the existing overgrown road that's up there, that used to go on the access to the clay pit, thing that was up there just a few years ago. It goes around the flag, all the way to the barn.
Okay. Uh, and that is, you're planning on that, using, utilizing that? Well, that's a very further style of the interest than allowing you to come down. Um, at least that's my point of view right now, I'm not willing to listen, but I, right now, I'm just certainly don't, I'm not in favor of this. I would like to just comment on a few things here. This is what we call the jungle, for obvious reasons, wooded area and fed by the underground water that comes out of the big spring. We refer to it as the Wade Spring. The only reason I can figure that is because this developer down here called it the Wade Springs Estate, this caught on, so it's referred to as Wade Spring. It was originally called Big Spring, Big Springs. Um, Big, Big Springs is, is, this area is Big Springs. I've seen a huge change in the abuse collectively for shooting and so on since this development has taken place and this up here. There's nowhere near as much shooting as there used to be, but there is still some. It bothers me that there are still people accessing it with ATV and motorcycles. They do come in from right here, the city has a fence, a tall fence, chain link, but it ends, right? They go right around. So you may have problems up here, but I guarantee you, you have a lot of access here. Some of them probably come in here. They're right, they come this way, they come this way, or did.
Yeah.
Um, and what's more, as this was covered, we had to take our fence down and we put it back up and we, we have an edging fence with trans barbed wire on the top. And to this day, we have people that wanna access Fifty East and Murdoch Drive, which is right in the middle of my property, they go right through my fence all the time and that really makes me mad. Um, now, I, I could make like miserable myself and those people by calling the police and everything and I've told them not to do any more than I have to, but, um, it is not gonna be allowed. I will stop it one way or the other. They're not gonna have access from Murdoch Drive and Fifty East, not through our property.
Good.
And I am concerned about, the city so far has elected not to do anything about this fencing. I really feel like that property line is fenced. The lower I get, the less money I've got to tend on subsidiary. Um, what else am I missing? Anyway, I needed to say this, I am concerned about that. I, I don't think we're gonna let you do it and, uh, you have any other questions for me or?
Oh, wait, I don't think we do.
So Jason Kelly, one more time, just in reference to the area that, uh, Mr. Bean was just pointing out that he's not a fan of, that, uh, that can be, from my perspective and from being the one who went with the professional trail designer and designed that whole area, that can easily be amended to fit whatever Bob's needs are. I have no problem adhering to whatever his concerns are with this property there, so...
You can pull those trails back?
Yep, 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 we can definitely make it adjusted there. That's not, that's not a huge deal from, from what that, the, the idea behind that trail, that particular trail right there, the beige one, the trail systems are professionally built on a, what's called a stacking loop system. The idea between the stacking loop system is the closer the trails are to the trailhead, the easier and more family-friendly they become. And the farther you get away from a trailhead, the more difficult and more challenging they become. That trail is closest to our main trailhead, which is the Murdoch Canal Trailhead down there, the Wade Springs Trailhead from Murdoch Canal. And we added the extra section in there to provide a little more family-oriented length in trail where we could have Cub Scouts doing their scout nature hikes and those kind of things. So if that needs to be amended, uh, to, to fit into what Bob would like to do, uh, that from our perspective and from a trail design perspective is not, uh, cohabited with anything else.
All right, any of those current trails now? I mean, are...
No, no. Uh, there, there is, oh gosh, I wish I could show you.
The trail's all over, but then...
Yeah, there is, there's, there is one that runs this little beige trail right as it crosses the fence and comes up this direction. There is kind of, there's an existing single-track trail there, but again, uh, Bob's been...
You just expanded it a little bit.
Yeah, and Bob's been more than accommodating and supportive and I would be very willing to do whatever he needs us to do.
Just a comment on that, he's Bob's client, he's the property owner. We have not, I mean, we've sat down and discussed this, um, he's seen a draft of the agreement. He's seen a draft of the agreement. If he's not in likable terms with that, that's his, it's his decision and the agreement will state that. So, you know, even, I would hate for, to see him cut a little more of the trail further east, but it, it's all up to the property owner. Same with Metro. If there, there may be section to this site plan that Metro will not allow us to build because of proximity to the aqueduct. So it could change. And, and that's the portion, you know, dealing with property owners.
Pretty easy change.
Yes, yeah, I mean, we're not talking a road, we're talking a trail that's a couple feet wide, so, yeah, they're pretty easy.
Dion, is that the only private owners that we have that are being addressed by this?
So...
I know that you said there was mostly not property owners, but I think there was a few. Are there any other property owners that might...
There's Mr. Bingham, there's Metropolitan, uh, and there is the bank property, uh, in Phase One. Further north, yeah.
I thought there were three that would be private property.
In Phase Two, there's, there's quite a few other additional property owners, which we've been communicating with them also.
Can I address them as...
Yeah, I'd like to say one more thing about me.
You got it, Bob.
Uh, we refer to the Forest Service and the city, I don't think it's clear to most of you what, what is really city and what is Forest Service. Uh, obviously, this, this was sold by James Wade to the city back in early thirties, the spring. Wade retained ten gallons of cement, which I own, to service the farm. So I own a ten-gallon amount of water right, a water line that goes due to the source. The city boundary then is this, and I assume it goes up like this around and then down, I guess. Anyway, this is city property, this is where the city boundaries are. Uh, and then it goes around, well, that goes up, up that line, right there. This is county. The Forest Service does not claim to have, they don't have the purview, or they're not over at my property. They come to the boundary. And, and you can't see my fence, my north property line, it doesn't show at all. But my north property line goes something like, something like this. And so from there, north and east up above the city property is all Forest Service. But Bob Bingham is not. It's neither city nor Forest Service, it's county. All of his upper land above that line there is, is county.
Brian Frutus, owner of Site Three and the three buildings there, six-six-one, six-six-three, and six-six-five, West State Street, Pleasant Grove. Uh, I'm, I'm definitely for a trail system, for the people that live here in the city and for the high schools to be able to use. Um, I see some great things happening with the kids being able to participate in the high school mountain bike program. And I think it's awesome that they can, they can do that. They have ride leaders, as Jason said, where NICA requires six, one ride leader for every six kids, and Jason, I think, is taking that up a notch to one ride leader for every four kids. So when NICA's involved, and I say NICA, meaning our little high school team here, is up there, there'll be a lot of adult supervision, um, participating in that. But I think this is gonna be a great thing. Uh, I've ridden on the trails all over Utah, and there's very rarely any traffic from just people in the city using it, whether you go to Alpine, um, or, or any of the other trails. There's a need. There's a lot of people that want to go ride. Uh, if we look at the Murdoch Canal Trail, there's a lot of use on that, a lot of use. And it's mixed use. There's people, as you mentioned, with strollers, and there's people that are walking and running, and some are on road bikes, and some are mountain bikes, and some are little kids. Uh, we're gonna have the same use here. There's a lot of people that just wanna go ride their bicycle in the dirt. And, uh, all the trails I've been to, that's my profession, I've been doing it for twenty-three years. People take care of the trails, you know, whether they're in Germany, whether they're in Austria, they love those trails, they feel very passionate about it, and they'll definitely clean that area up and take care of it. Um, you know, there's a lot of questions and comments about guns. You know, if you're out shooting, you need to be able to take the responsibility of shooting safely. So they know they're shooting illegally right there. And, and if people wanna do something illegal, it's hard to stop them. But, um, you know, this, this isn't gonna make that problem worse, it's gonna make it better, if anything. Uh, as far as the, the funding, you know, my understanding is, is the funding that NICA was going to bring to the table has been, been pledged by other parties, so I don't think there was any net loss there, um, in, in that. So, um, you know, I, I think it'd be great to try and, and buffer this thing as much as possible. Absolutely wanna make sure the drainage and everything works well, but, you know, they're, they're just bicycle trails, we're not gonna take bulldozers up there, we're not going to have a motorcycle race, we're just talking about riding a bicycle. So, I don't know, so I'm definitely for this project.
Thank you.
I'm Christian Burella, I live at seven-nine-seven South eleven-hundred East in PG. I'm a multi-year NICA head coach, was, um, and I am also a UBU graduate with an earth science degree specific on geotechnical hazards. So a lot of the questions about the erosion and other potential geologic hazards actually caught my attention, I was very interested in that. So we've called you good friends, by the way. But, uh, something that, um, I, I have to completely say amen to Brian Frutus, I think he said it better than I could've. I am a hundred percent ecstatically, um, in favor of this trail. I hope it gets built. Uh, I use it almost every single day, uh, my whole entire family. Um, I think that a lot of the, um, concerns have been addressed the best we possibly can. I think that overall, the whole community is trying their best to work together to find the best solutions for everybody. I believe that a lot of the parking issues, um, from out of town are honestly, my own personal feeling from riding a lot of other places much like Brian Frutus, is the people that are coming from out of the community, they use the parking lots. Because they don't know where the trails are, except for looking online or from locals, and they use the lots that they're indicated to use, because they don't know where else they're going in the city. Um, the local residents, from my experience, are gonna be using primarily the Murdoch Canal to access these trails, so they're not gonna be driving their cars there. Um, so most of the traffic in those areas are gonna be primarily, in my opinion, local traffic. People that are just riding around the corner and don't wanna hop on their bike, but just drive to one of those empty lots or such. So that's my opinion on that, right or wrong, I'm not sure. But, um, something else I wanna point out is, and I think Dion could probably speak to this, so it's for, I guess, as a question, but, uh, my understanding, being good friends with Jason and kind of understanding the whole process, is a big part of this is gonna involve a heavy cleanup of the whole area, which will improve the beautification, but also minimize the, can I just say nefarious activity that takes place in those, in, what is it called, the jungle? So, the jungle, uh, which will help a lot. Um, and from the experience I've had with other parks, Corner Canyon, Lammert Park, et cetera, is that as soon as the people get in there and using it with the trails and hiking, the people that want to use it for those nefarious activities, they do, they move on. They go up higher because they don't wanna be around other people. That's part of why they go to those jungle areas. But the last thing I wanted to bring up about the erosion is, I believe, including the plan, Dion, maybe you can speak to this, uh, there's also a revegetation, uh, part of the plan as well, that would, one, increase the beautification of the area, especially for people that wanna have that without the fences, uh, that has been spoken about, but also would greatly decrease any potential erosion that people may have a concern about, this stuff washing down into their backyards, et cetera. If you vegetate to the degree I believe they're looking at, the only, the only way that, um, you're gonna get that type of runoff is gonna be in such a heavy storm that nothing will stop it. So at least that's my view of it. I don't know if you wanna speak anymore to the revegetation, Dion, but that's it, so...
So, uh, as Bob Bingham has mentioned, there's already a lot of trails up there. We're getting illegal trails built on our portion of, of the property. We have it further east on the Forest Service. We wanna actually grasp that desire that these individuals have. Hopefully, we can catch them. We have caught one person on the G, uh, create a new trail up there to the G, and focus them on our project. Utilize their, their desire to, to improve these trails. But one of the big things, as we've looked at this, is the revegetation. Uh, we have to spec a seed mix to Metro, uh, this, to rejuvenate sections of just, oh, and then, you know, we've done a few, we've actually done a little bit, we had an eagle project in there about a month ago, applying seven or nine trees, uh, all with native plants, that is what we'll use in this area. Obviously, we don't have an irrigation system, so we utilize volunteers to go in and rejuvenate some of these illegal trails, some of the trails that are existing that we're gonna, that we're gonna do away with, so...
Okay. Do you have anybody else?
Once again, just one last question as far as the liability in a city park? How does that work for a trail system, 'cause it's not a park?
It, it, it actually is, I, we checked on that after last time, and our city attorney said that city insurance covers it the same way with any of the...
So it's not an additional fee that will go back? It's not like adding an extra car in the insurance policy? Thank you.
Jet call at four-four-seven East fifteen sixty North, three homes down from Bob Bingham. Uh, I access this every day. My son rides on the team. I get to be one of the ride leaders on the team. Hugely important, as I have run this and ridden this numerous times, I can't even count how many times, like many of these guys in the room, but, but one thing is for certain, we do have a significant asset in our community that we need to care for, and we need to look for improving that area and be cognizant and create consensus for homeowners in our community. And so I, I just want to go on record saying we need this, uh, in building that outdoor recreation opportunity in our community.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yeah.
Actually, briefly, Chase Titten, City twelve-six East three hundred North, just south there. Like the gentleman before, David, I also use the area and am a hundred percent support for this network, we're excited for it. I think it truly adds to our community and is a draw for, for us, with young children and kids, um, to be, uh, you know, to look at Pleasant Grove as a place where we wanna raise our family, uh, because of these sorts of infrastructures and investments in community development parks. So just another voice, uh, supporting the project, and we're excited to see what happens with it. Thank you.
I'll, I'll keep it really short, 'cause I know we're probably, everyone's gonna have to go and make a decision on this. Um, one of the reasons, I just wanted to say, sounds, one of the reasons we moved from England, you can probably tell from acting, I'm not local, uh, for that long a time, um, aside from, from the job I take here, which I really enjoy, is the, the family kind of sense there is out here. I mean, we, we used to, half, half mile down from where I used to live in England, we used to live in a nice area, it was, you know, kids would hang out at street lamps, smoking pot, and, you know, breaking into, you know, kicking down doors and nicking stuff from the, from the local grocery or whatever else, the off license, the alcohol store. That doesn't happen here. And I think one of the reasons is there's so much for the kids to do. It's great, and I think ideas like this are really good. Um, the concern I have is just the proximity. It's literally how those are just the property lines. Um, we, we fell in love with the house five years ago, we were told that, hey, you know, this is city land, but it's not, it can't be used residential because the grade's too steep. It backs onto BLM land, so you, those are gonna have a great view, and now we're bringing this, you know, um, effectively into our backyard. I, I can't see from the plans and the detail they're at whether that is thirty-feet distance. The flags definitely look a lot closer in places, um, than thirty feet. I, I honestly think that, you know, and I don't know how feasible this is, but if there's a hundred-foot gap from every property owner that stood up tonight and complained about something, it's gonna be a problem. You'd have a lot of support from everyone. I think the concern is just a little bit on the lack of study of the runoff, and it sounds like there's a lot of experts who think it's gonna be okay, but are they gonna come and dig out my basement if it floods, or my neighbor's basement if there's, you know, three feet of water and mud in there?
I, I think they're concerned about it, and, I mean, my feeling on it is this, at minimum, it's gonna be far better than what we've got right now. As far as, right now, you've got a ticking time bomb that depends on that storm, right?
Uh, I mean, it's been good for the, for the last five to ten years, um, but that's because the, the homeowners, I mean, rail lines came to the city year after year to say, hey, this needs, this needs fixing, and the city didn't wanna know about it.
Now, we've got, we've got an impetus for the city to say, okay, we've got a reason to be up there. I, I think it, I mean, if it were me, I'd be happy in that sense. I think this is, this is, you know, this is, this is...
Accretive, I think, would be better word than happy right now.
But, but let me ask you this, would you prefer, I mean, if this was like, just leave it as it is, don't address it at all, or do this?
I don't know if you have the same in the US, but there's an old adage in the UK that says if it ain't broke, don't fix it, and right now, it ain't broke.
Are you sure? You, I thought you were telling me that there was a drainage problem.
There was until the residents took it in their own hands and directed the runoff past the, past sides of the homes.
So if they don't do anything regarding the runoff, then you're okay with that?
I, at the moment, I have no, no reason to think that it's gonna be a problem if we don't touch it, but it's, it's, it's the change that we're concerned about.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Sure. Anybody else?
Sorry, just making entrance.
Is Mr. LaBonne?
Ryan, oh, nine-nine-one East four-fifty South, unfortunately, I'm not even close to this bike park. Um, a couple things, I just wanted, uh, to address, I know it beat you to death, the four-hundred-and-so feet of, down there, I don't wanna use the pointer, but, um, and Jason's comment regarding the start and, the start and finish, and how important and critical that is for any kind of racing event. I've put on multiple road races, and even though it's a different animal, uh, there still are some similarities, including the start and finish, and it is critical, and I can see concerns with those that come and, and they're not familiar with races and how they coordinate and so forth, that a start and finish is very, very critical. And so I think that section, um, I don't know the answer to it, but I just wanna add to how important it is for a start and finish and, and just basically location and how it's all set up. Uh, second thing is, um, I do a lot of youth sports training, and any kind of program that gets the youth out is, I support. I mean, it can literally, literally save lives, and, and I've just seen how, I mean, programs like this, Jason spends numerous hours working with the youth, and I see how it affects the kids, you know, those that don't wanna, don't wanna play team sports and, and do something different, like mountain biking. I mean, programs like this is, is so critical in a community, and, and this is just adding to it. And, and so anything to, to get the youth out, to get them involved, to get them active, keep them active, I'm a hundred percent behind. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, one more. Sorry, I have really a long time. Brad Perkins, JV Engineers. Um, I, there were a couple questions with the drainage, and there was also a comment about the completeness of the plans, and I just wanted to just reassure you that, um, as engineers, we did take a very comprehensive look at these plans under, under Dagan's direction. Um, we had a lot of input from Dion, um, we had several reviews of those plans, out of quality control. Um, we took into account drainage issues on the plans, um, except for the one area that we knew was, was going to be addressed by the city, and so that's, um, there weren't things that were just forgotten about or left out, but I just wanna make sure it feels comfortable with that. Thank you. Okay, that's it. We'll close the public, uh, comment section and bring it back up here.
I'd like to see...
Sure.
Um, so, I want to make it clear that I've always liked this, um, the site plan, the, the use of the van, or the mountain, it's still since then, but, um, as far as the drainage goes, this is not our first meeting, so I was aware of how they were addressing that before, so that's why I didn't address it again. Um, some of the questions I asked were out of respect of some of the concerns that the citizens, um, have mentioned and residents have mentioned. Um, some of it was just clarification for me, but most of it was out of respect for them, to get some answers for them. Um, I am a huge property rights advocate, but my property rights stance is the edge of the property. So anything beyond the edge of the property, that's somebody else's property, and, and that's a whole different issue. So, um, yeah, so, uh, as far as the distance of where the trails are, as long as they're not interfering with the actual property of individuals that have the right to sit down, as I can tell, it's been stated, um, I don't have a problem with where the trails are, how close the property of those trails are, 'cause it is not the law of their property. Um, as far as personally, I have concerns about the cost and the maintenance of it and what it's gonna, how, how that's gonna impact the city, how much the city's gonna be responsible for that, and how much as a citizen will be responsible for that. That is not... That is not my role here. That is not my, as a planning commission, the funding has nothing to do with this process or my decision. So.
So can I just ask for clarification? That four hundred feet that keeps getting brought up, can the Bonneville Trail not be used as our start and end line then? Is that what we're understanding? Because it's not a flat enough.
Um, yeah, if I, if I ask you to, Jason, then yeah.
So when it comes to a start and finish line for a race, it's required that we have a loop. And so if our finishers are coming this way and our starters are going this way on the Bonneville Shoreline Trail, that poses a very huge problem. So the, the point here is to create a loop where they can come in and come up the finish line here.
Okay, so this part of it, and I'm just, this part right here is you're gonna be your starter, your finisher?
This is how it would work. If, if there theoretically, if there were an event.
Right.
The start-finish line, the actual line itself would be right about there, right on the Bonneville Shoreline Trail, on that golden color. The athletes would come as they were returning, well, as they started the race, they would start from here and go under that start line. They would continue up here, drop into the trail here and then work their way down. And I could go through the whole thing if you wanted to. But in the end, they come back up the lower trail here. And then they loop onto here and come back through for their lap. And then if they start their next lap, they would drop down on that trail that's in between them. That way, when multiple waves are going, we're not putting people on, risking each other. That's kind of how the design would go if there were to be an event there. When we would use it for practice, obviously, we would be doing a full circuit loop every time. Does that answer?
Yes, definitely, yes.
I want to say something too. When Jason came and presented to us the first time, I had never been to one of these events that we're not really talking about because NICA has to come and approach us and ask and the city can deal with this and the city can say no, or the city can provide specific rules or, or say, we're gonna do a trial event and then if it doesn't work, then we're not gonna do it anymore. And, and it's not just NICA, but there, I mean, there's, there's other uses. I mean, this, this trail is going to be built to accommodate horses, you know? Man runners and hikers and families and all kinds of things. But since that time, I have gone to six of these. And it's been a, a really interesting experience. And there are three of the different courses that abut homes. I mean, they're right there with, with the homes as neighbors. There, there are some of them which are right off the edge of homes where, where you drive through a neighborhood and then the parking is out in an undeveloped area. And, and knowing that this would, this meeting would occur, one of the things that I did is I went and I spent some time walking up into the neighborhoods and talking to people and, and I, I, I can't, in Draper, they actually shut down a road. Because the, the, the event, while it goes underneath, they, there's a section of, of the road, I don't know if you're familiar with the, with the Draper facility, but there's, there's the rodeo grounds where it kind of starts and finishes. And they have a tunnel that goes under the road, but they still, they, they shut that road down for a little bit. And I'm not gonna tell you, I mean, there were a couple of residents that were like, what, I can't get through this road? And they were a little bit fried about that. But as I, as I walked up into some of these neighborhoods and, and looked at, you know, I think there were, I think there were some people that were attempting to park in different places where they weren't, and they got chased out of there pretty regularly, I think. And I know that they have huge groups of people working on, on traffic management, you know, I don't know, hundreds of volunteers it seems to me. But the cities aren't gonna ask these guys not to come anymore. They, the cities that are involved with these youth coming appreciate it. They, they, they very much appreciate it. And the families that are involved with this, I mean, you know, these kids are, for the most part, not the kids that are on the football team. They're not the kids that are playing basketball or baseball. And I have one. Sorry. And for me to see him. He, we've got a kid with severe ADHD, really learning disability. And this has been really life-changing for our family. And I appreciate just the fact that it exists as a sport. I hope that, I mean, right now, it's, it's seen as a club event for the, for the high school. It's not a, a developed sport like football and, and some of these different things. But these are kids that, to a large extent, have been really marginalized. Their team sports don't work. And this is teaching them teamwork, but it's teaching them in a different way where they can be a participant on their own terms. I don't see a huge impact to the neighborhoods. As a matter of fact, I've, for the one up in Draper, I, I, you know, whenever I'd run into somebody who actually lived in the neighborhood, a lot of them have kids participating. The, the Draper team because, because they have that trail that's right there, it, it's, it's huge. It's, I mean, ours is big. Theirs is double our size. And.
Five percent of their overall high schools on the mountain.
Yeah. And, and one, you, so whenever I'd run into somebody that's from Draper, I'd say, well, how, how close do you live to the trails? And in general, it was like, geez, not close enough, you know? And of course, I'm talking to parents that have, you know, kids that are participating in this program. But I, it, you know, I've run into people that are wandering down because it's right within the community that, you know, they don't know what's going on and they're still coming down because there's four thousand people down here. You know, it's just for two days, but they, or a day and a half. But they, as they wander down through and they look at it, they, you know, they're excited about it. And, and I would guess personally that there's a whole lot of families that, that, you know, they, they go and wander down through there and they look at all the different vendors that have come to support these kids on their own time, volunteering, you know, I mean, there, there are, oh, I bet there's sixty companies that have Easy Ups that are down there and they're doing maintenance on the bikes for the kids for free and all kinds of things. And, and I would bet that there's a whole lot of people that get involved with it, but I know that there's a lot of people selling real estate. There's a lot of people that are moving into areas and, and one of the things that they're asking about is, hey, how close am I to the Murdoch Trail? Or how close am I to the, I mean, that's a value add, not a value detract. And, and so I, I, I think, you know, we have a fear of unknown, you know? And, and it's scary a little bit for our community because it's like, well, we haven't seen this before and it looks like a lot of lines and I, you know, it's a little, a little frightened, I think. But I, I can tell you that, you know, I've never been involved with this before. I've never seen it before. I wasn't sure what to expect. The first time, first time I showed up at one of these events, I was expecting to go home at eleven o'clock. I had a real estate appointment later that day. I was like, ah, you know, the thing goes to five o'clock in the afternoon and I'm like, all right, I had no idea. And, and I was astounded by how well organized it was and how many people showed up. I, I know that this, I mean, in my opinion, as a citizen, this is a valuable addition to our city. So anyhow, that's what I was about to say.
So I just have one more question maybe. And I know Jason has already addressed it, I'm sure, multiple times, but I know it's been brought up again about the concern of, of extra traffic and all that type of stuff. So with us removing the event for now.
Yeah.
What impact will we have as far as parking? I mean, I know the high school team is obviously right there, so does, is it going to really affect the neighborhoods that much anymore with the Murdoch Trail and everything else that we have already available?
Sure. Well, the easy answer is we don't know. We, we'll get it in, we'll see what happens and we'll make adjustments as we need to make adjustments to accommodate what we find. The, the best guess I can tell you is I don't foresee, as Christian mentioned, a huge impact in parking. Local residents, including my team, will bike there. We will ride our bikes. My team likely next year, should the trails be approved and be put in in time, we will meet at the high school. That's a convenient place for us to meet. And then we will ride our bikes up to the trail system from there.
That's what I was expecting.
Yeah. So for local residents, the vast majority of local residents are going to come on their bikes. You can hop on the Murdoch Canal Trail and jump on the easiest access point to get into the trail system. There's really not a huge reason to drive in there. From people coming from out of our, our, our city to come here to see it, as Christian mentioned, the vast majority of those are going to be bringing up a map saying, where do I go to get to the trail system? And they're gonna be showing the trailheads. That's where they're gonna head to. So I don't see a huge issue with parking in areas away from the trailheads, how, how popular the trails become and how, how much they impact the trailheads. My hope is they become so popular that we have to build more trailheads because that will show that our city wants this, that our city needs this, and that it's a value add to us. So if we ever grow to that point that we over, we, we're growing over the accommodating parking areas, then at that point, it's time to sit down again and say, you know what, we need to build some more trailheads. Let's see, and we need, maybe we need more trail, you know? Maybe we've got enough people that we want to do more trail. Right now, we have close to about a hundred parking spaces, given the three different trailheads that impact it. If you look at the number of miles of trail that that represents, that's about eight miles of trail. And that's if we include the Bonneville Shoreline and the other double tracks in there. If we put a hundred people, let's just say there's only one bike per car on eight miles of trail, it's gonna be pretty crowded. So does that cover what you were looking for?
Yes, absolutely. Thank you, Jason.
I, I appreciate the fact that it's unhooked from NICA because I, I, I think that it, I mean, we need to be able to approach this on our own terms as a city and say, look, if you're gonna even, you know, whether it's NICA or anybody else, if, if you're gonna come and talk to us about doing this, you, you, you know, we're gonna set the rules because we want to protect our city and our residents as much as possible while benefiting everybody as much as possible.
Well, and I think it gives us as a city a chance to get used to it and enjoy it ourselves before we do anything large. So I think it gives us a chance to enjoy it more.
Anybody else have anything?
Why don't you explain to us how we're supposed to motion on anything?
Well, I think we'll go ahead, I.
You have to go back to roll those bodies.
I, I, well, I, I think, you think we should start, should we start with the, going back to the other ones first because we need to have it in our plan first? Okay, let's go back and open up the public comment on the items five, six and seven, which are amendments to the master plan and dealing with adding an appendix and adding amended text and goals regarding weight streams, park and multi-use trail and a system and, and those things. Let's keep this really brief if anybody from the public does want to mention anything new.
True. I, I may be wrong, but I thought that the public comment here was for. I think you've got it already.
Perfect. We'll, we'll count to this down. So we'll close, we did close the public comment.
Yes, yes, you did.
Okay, so.
Mr. Chair, I'm gonna make one motion.
Okay, so Commissioner Richards is gonna make a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move the planning commissioner through the request to amend number one, Pleasant Grove City General Plan, Chapter seven and nine, as proposed.
Do you want to include what the, the comments that were made for a few different additions or?
With the strikeouts and modifications.
With the strikeouts and modifications and other corrections that were pointed out in the discussion.
Here we go. A motion by Commissioner Richards and a second by Commissioner Nielsen, all in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, I move that, I move the planning commissioner through the quest to amend Pleasant Grove Bicycle and pedestrian master plan, adding appendix B, including the cross outs and additions and any extra comments.
Second.
Got a motion from Commissioner Richards and a second from Commissioner Nielsen, all in favor?
Aye.
I guess I'm on the roll there. I move the planning commissioner, Mr. Chair, move the planning commissioner approve the request to amend Pleasant Grove Parks and Recreation Master Plan as proposed and adopted exhibits, conditions and findings in the staff report, as well as any complete cross outs and modifications and any comments.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion from Commissioner Richards and a second from Commissioner Nielsen, all in favor?
Aye.
And then we've got item number.
Mr. Chair. Okay, Mr. Chair, I move the planning commissioner recommend the city council approve the request of Pleasant Grove City for a twenty-eight point eight acre multi-use trail system to the rural residential and our one twenty single-family residential zones, adopting the exhibits, conditions and findings in the staff report. So if I may, it looks like we may not have included the verbiage in that motion. It's not just the twenty-eight acres, but the adjoining acreage in the foothills, expanding north and south.
Do we need to adj, do we need to make some kind of a comment?
As per the exhibit in the staff report.
I know, but we have a resident that may be challenging that.
I think you could add the verbiage, obviously, this is subject to additional approvals at this point.
We, we need to take into account that he cannot allow this, this.
It may need to be amended further, but I think you can approve it.
And I would suggest that we say that we do all we can to go ahead and mitigate the, you know, concern, I mean, the, to keep it as, as far as we, how do you even work that? It's a plan that's dependent upon cooperation of the property owners. At this point, the city hasn't secured any of the adjacent property lines. Okay.
Okay, so I want to amend my motion after the twenty-eight point eight acre multi-use trail system, as well as approximately a hundred additional acres located outside east of Pleasant Grove City boundaries and the federal areas.
And.
In cooperation with.
Provided we obtain the cooperation of the residents.
Residents and property.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion. And you have enough to, to, to type us up a motion based on that?
Try it.
Okay, your motion from Commissioner Richards and a second from Commissioner Nielsen, all in favor?
Aye. I joined next step. See you Tuesday.
Okay.
Yes, this does go to city council Tuesday night at six o'clock.
Okay, now we'll move on to item number nine, which is a public comment for a city code. Do we need a five minute break? Yeah, let's have a five minute bio break. We'll reconvene at ten o'clock.
Get one of these last two real fast.
This one's like bookkeeping.
No extra time on the presentation.
So what do you say? The twenty-eight point eight acres and then a hundred.
Additional. In the foothills east of the.
I think we're gonna charge through this. Let's, let's not, Ken, let's just go ahead and charge through this. We've got two more items. We've, we've got some people that feel like they want to help. If you need to, to excuse yourself, to, go ahead and do that. We'll move on without you. Go ahead, Royce. By the way, hold on, let me read this because I need to read it again, right? Item number nine, public hearing. Okay, go ahead, Royce.
Okay, this one's really simple, just bookkeeping pretty much. So we had some overlay zones that are in the wrong chapter. We just need to move to the overlay chapter. So we just put in some different numbers, moved them over. That's it.
Okay. Any questions? No, okay. Thank you, Royce. Now we're gonna open this up for, to. Now we're gonna open this up for, uh, to the public and, um, do any of you have anything you'd like to add or? Okay, we're gonna close the public remarks down and bring it back up here. Anybody want to leave?
Mr. Chair, I move, I, Commissioner recommend the city council approve the request Pleasant Grove City for amendment sections 10 dash 11, dash G, downtown mixed use overlay, 10 dash 11, dash integral, virtual overlay, 10 dash 11, dash I, senior housing overlay, and Chapter 13 overlay, 10, 11, and Chapter 13.
Okay, we've got a motion. Commissioner Nelson and a second from Commissioner Baptista.
Aye.
Royce, so this one's just, uh, it's got several sections to it. Basically, so we're talking about infrastructure and, um, building permits. So currently, the residential code requires that you have a whole bunch of things, uh, put in before you get a building permit, which doesn't make a lot of sense from a development standpoint. So what, uh, what the code allows for now is that you have 25% of your building permits for residential development, once you get that stuff in. Um, and then, once you get all of the improvements put in, then you can finally get all of your building permits. What we found is literally enforcing this code makes it so that development is needed and everything needs to be. Um, so for commercial, they have their fire, their emergency and, uh, construction access. And then they need also have their, uh, super water protection plan set up and they can get building permits. Again, we just want to make sure that we're trying to streamline the process. So what we're doing is replacing building permits, um, because the code, we're wrong, you have these different sections, but the code overall says you need to do everything before you can have a building permit, which just doesn't make a lot of sense, and that hasn't been how we're doing things. So, um, what we propose is that we have all improvements put in before you get a certificate of occupancy, and that makes a lot more sense. So we're gonna maintain the 25% thing with residential, um, so that we don't have, you know, problems with access to homes and not building homes on, uh, streets that don't exist. But other than that, pretty much, if, if they wanna, you know, wait to put in a sidewalk and they're trying to build the house, we don't wanna have them put in the sidewalk, drive over it, destroy it, put it in the house, then have to put it in the sidewalk again. So that's kind of the point of this code. We haven't really been enforcing things the way the code's written, so we're just changing it to make sure things are supposed to do. Any questions? Nope. Okay. Do you guys have any questions?
Actually, oh, sorry, I do.
You wanna ask?
Commissioner Nelson has a question. Forgive me.
Okay.
It seemed like a couple of years ago, they actually amended something, and it's in the back of my mind, many years ago, um, where they were, they're required that so much of the work be done prior to issuing permits, because there was so much being left. And I don't know all of it, Ken, but then I, if that makes any sense at all, I just said. There were so much of the submissions that were being left by the developer, that they required that, that there be things installed or barriers put in place, they couldn't just walk away from it. I remember that.
And I think that's where the 25% came from.
Okay, okay.
And we're still gonna have the 25%.
That's great.
And, and then the other hook is the certificate of occupancy doesn't get issued on the last 25%.
Can't close it till, can't close it till you get the certificate.
So my second question is, thank you, is, um, does this have anything to do with the state? Does this give me a feeling? No?
Well, I'll, I'll give you a little bit of background. Uh, the Bella Grace Development that's up here on the block, it's a library, it's currently under construction. There was a provision in the Downtown Village Code that required that, um, all street improvements be completed before issuance of building permits. It's the only place in the code that we had that. And as we researched and tried to determine why that was there, cause it didn't make sense to us, that, uh, it, it went back to.
We can hear you in the hallway. If you'll, uh, quiet down or walk further out, that'd be great.
So anyway, um, we realized we had a problem with the development of their property, as one resident, uh, pointed out to us. So we did make an exception against the ordinance, uh, with at the same time creating a legislation, pending legislation to change that, because it didn't make sense. But our research determined that when we were putting together the Downtown Village Zone, we did look to, to other communities in their zoning for this type of zone. We looked at Orem and what they did for their Midtown Village project. Some of the verbiage that came into our ordinance was based on how to handle those types of projects. And we realized that, that didn't really fit our needs and somehow that verbiage wasn't reviewed carefully enough, got into our ordinance, and so that's all we could really determine. But we did determine it, it's not good language, it's not effective, you can't force all-street improvements before any issuance of building permit, especially when a lot of those improvements are associated with, uh, onsite development. So, so that didn't make sense. So anyway, that's kind of what kicked off our review here and we went ahead and looked at all other chapters to see what, what amendments do we need to make, so this all flows together.
And also, uh, the code I forgot to mention has an overall, uh, statement that basically says the city engineer can kind of work with a, a developer to determine what improvements you can put in when. So if he feels like, yeah, these improvements are necessary, um, whereas on another one, on another development, those same improvements at the same stage wouldn't necessarily be required, um, he can, he can require them. So the code is about percent like. That's why we like some of the street, uh, the commissioner's here for a while, right? No idea. Okay. Thank you, Royce. Let's open this up for a public comment. We're gonna close that back down and bring it back up here.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion.
Do you have to read all these papers? I just want to know.
I, I think you can say as,
As listed.
Provided in the agenda.
I rescind, I rescind my motion, I'll let Commissioner Nelson make it.
His last.
His last.
We'll call this.
That's a good, that's a good one, too.
Definitely the dashes in there.
No, he said that you were not deciding, you just say, refer to them.
As prescribed.
I move the planning commission, Mr. Chairman, I move the planning commission recommend the city council approve the request Pleasant Grove City for amendment modifying sections as stated in the.
We have a motion from the last motion ever to be made from Commissioner Nelson. We have a couple of seconds. We have a second from Commissioner Baptista. All in favor?
Aye.
We need to review and approve the minutes from November 12th, 2015, planning, um, Commissioner Mead. Somebody?
Mr. Chair, I move approve the, uh, high mission minutes, November 12th.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Nelson. We have, uh, a second from Commissioner Carden. All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, I move the adjournment.
Second.
We have a motion for adjournment from Commissioner Tunes.
Before we do that, I, I just wanted to thank Commissioner Nelson for 20 years of service that he's provided.